To catch that you weren't, you didn't remember correctly. And we'll also have some references checked on the finalists that we talk about at the end of tonight. And I'm thinking we'll talk about this more, but Martina and I are going to do the reference checks. And we'll probably email a summary to everyone so they have it before the, the meeting. So between each interview scheduled for 40 minutes and we have 10 minutes in between to get up and walk around, take notes, whatever. And I will start off each interview and introduce the board and they'll, and ask them to introduce them. And we'll just sort of give them an overview of the process. So I'm going to introduce Karen Hardin. Most everyone knows her. She's the Director of Human Resources here at the district. And she is going to walk us through the process because this is her area of expertise, hiring processes, which is great, interview and hiring. And then we'll have time to ask our questions if she doesn't already answer them. Thanks Karen.
You bet. So I'm going to make no assumptions and, and talk at you as if you've never been on an interview panel. And I don't want anyone to be offended by that. I just want to make sure we're all on the same place. So you have in front of you a packet and it has a number of things that we're going to talk about. So it contains your interview documentation, which includes an interview sheet for each firm that has the questions and then kind of a strengths and wondering sheet on the back. And so that'll be where you can take notes. It also has the forced ranking sheet, which we're going to talk a little bit about. That is going to be really easy. Once I talk about it, it's not intuitive to look at it right to begin with. So, and once the interviews start, you guys are just going to be really good listeners and take notes. Sorry, that sounded like I was telling you to be really good listeners. I trust that you'll be really good listeners and just take notes on the things that you hear because the better your notes are, the more helpful it'll be when you're debriefing them afterwards. So, and as Judy pointed out, that 10 minutes between is really for you to quietly reflect, what did I hear? What do I want to add? What felt really good? What felt like a wondering, something to question? We don't talk and debrief between interviews. It, it really is difficult to get any kind of impression out once we start to debrief. So if you start to debrief between interviews, then I've got a preconceived issue in my head or an idea and it prevents me from having my own thoughts. So that's one of the reasons why we discourage talking between interviews and you wait until everybody's been interviewed and then we can debrief as a whole. Similar to me not wanting to make any assumptions about you and interview panels, I think it's really important not to make assumptions about these firms. So they've provided written materials and they're going to talk with you tonight. And you have to reflect on what we've learned through the process, even though it's sometimes really hard. You're going to make an assumption, oh, I bet they've this. So I would imagine they've that. And it's really important to not do that. They know that they have shot at this with this interview and they know that they had a shot at this with written materials. So they're going to provide their best information in the questions that they answer. And we just have to make sure that we don't make any assumptions. With that said, I'm also going to suggest, one of the things that's really important is they all have fair level ground to interview, which makes it tricky to ask follow-up questions. So each of you have a question that was assigned. Those are on your sheet. So Mary, you get to start us off with question one, and then it goes Martina, Maya, Laurel, Judy, Gordon, and Alicia. I would like to suggest that you don't ask follow-up questions. That can give a candidate an undue advantage or an unfair advantage unless you ask the same follow-up of everyone. And if you don't ask it of the first person or the first firm, it's hard to do it for everyone. So the general rule in when we're conducting interviews in the school district is that we discourage follow-up questions and that we ask that you stick to the questions that are designed. Again, these firms have done this. They know they better put their best foot forward when you ask a question. I say all of that. And if it feels like they didn't understand the question and they're just going down the wrong rabbit hole, these are also not designed to be tricks. So if Maya asks her question and they don't hear it and they're going down the wrong path, Maya, feel free and comfortable to interrupt and just say, you know, I'm going to reread this question to you because I, I think you might've heard something wrong or I want to make sure you're getting the right question. So feel free to like redirect them if it feels like they're on the wrong path. I think that's a very fair and professional thing to do. So I'm, I'm just checking my notes. Make sure I get through all of this. So after completing the interview, you have 10 minutes to gather your thoughts and write down any notes you have. This is also a really good time to do the forced ranking. So I'm going to, I'm going to teach you forced ranking. It's not hard, but again, it's not intuitive. So when you look at the forced ranking sheet, the first candidates that you all get to talk to tonight and learn from are Hazard, Young, and Atea. So after the first interview, it's super easy. They're going to be ranked number one for you, right? Because we've only interviewed the one. So it looks something like that. Then we're going to, you're going to interview Alma Advisory Group, Alma Advisory Group? Alma, Alma. And this time you have two groups that you're, two firms that you're going to be comparing. Martina might decide, you know what? Alma is my favorite. And that puts Hazard, Young, and Atea in number two. So your forced ranking is going to change. And then the third one, let's say Martina, here's the three and she still likes Alma, but she's decided that McPherson Jacobson is number two and Hazard Young is number three. So it's individual. You don't have to worry about it. And we even do this. There's a preliminary column because what happens in interviews is dialogue during the debrief. So you're all going to have some time after you meet all three to debrief. And at that point, Martina might go, you know what? I didn't, thank you Gordon for saying that. In her head, she's like, oh, I didn't hear it that way. After Gordon reflected on that, now I have kind of a different opinion. And so at the end of the night, Martina will reevaluate and decide, you know what? I'm going to stick with Alma Hazard and Young is now my number two and McPherson is number three. And that can change based on the debrief and the conversation you all have. The forced ranking just kind of helps us during the debrief to have a conversation. Occasionally, interview panels all pick the same people as, the same candidate is the top choice or they all pick the same one as maybe one not to consider. And so the forced ranking kind of helps us get to that kind of conversation. Gordon, I see a question.
Thanks Karen. I'm just wondering how we, like we, like I'm a little concerned that we do this process and we're naturally going to do these rankings based on what we hear tonight. But we also got all this written material from them and probably those of us on the subcommittee spent a little more time paying attention to it, but everybody got it. So how do we, or is there a time? I don't know. We can do it in 10 minutes. I feel like I'm going to be paying attention to what they say, but then also don't want to forget the, the things that come out in the, I mean, some of them submitted lots of material.
Yeah. That's good. And what would be ideal is if, if I gave you time now to just kind of refresh and review the materials. I, I haven't seen the materials. And so I don't know how lengthy some of them are, but Gordon, you're right. Everything they've submitted is part of the process. So you can do one of two things. You can either do the forced ranking just on what you've heard tonight. Because remember Judy said you will have the opportunity to revisit some materials between now and the November 3rd meeting. And that can be part of your all dialogue when you're deciding which firm to go with. I had assumed you got materials where you had seen them before tonight.
We did. We, we, everyone got them. I don't know if people had a chance to read them.
Okay. Yeah. So you can also roll that in Gordon. So if you feel like you had even Steven shot at reviewing all the materials, that can certainly and should certainly be part of your forced ranking. Sorry, that's kind of wishy washy based on if you'd seen them or not, right? So.
Yeah, I just, it may, I don't know. I feel like it may end up being, I know the goal is to like winnow down to, to winnow this group down. And that might be possible, but it might also take, well, I have to go back and look at that stuff.
I hope, you know, we, our group did get them two times. So they got them before, you know, I, I don't know. It was like a week ago. And then again, when we were going to take action before we reopen the search. So, you know, we've had them for a while. So I hope everyone got a chance to look at them. But you can peruse them in the 10 minutes and also have them in front of you when we're having the debrief, which would help maybe too.
And also a really important step between tonight and your final decision is reference checks, which will also play into the final decision. So and that, that was, we can talk more about the debrief as we like enter in the debrief. But since Gordon just raised the question about materials, unless people have specific questions about the interview process, the questioning part, it might be good for me to be quiet and give you guys time to look at the materials. Mary.
I understand that there's going to be reference check, which is good. Will we see that before the November 3rd meeting? Or will it be presented at the November 3rd meeting?
No, that's what I said. Our, our intention would be to summarize it and get it out to people before November 3rd.
Okay, thank you.
Christine, you popped on there. Did you have something to say?
Yes, just, it, it actually is a matter that is not public record and will, will be discussed in executive session. So we can, we can, you can discuss it there. And I wouldn't email it.
Okay, okay. So we'll have an executive session before November 3rd, but then people, you know, were voting that night, correct? That same night because November 3rd is a week from tonight.
November is in a week. Yikes. Um, so the last thing I want to say before I'm quiet is just to remind, and a couple of us were on early, to remind you that the notes that you take are part of a public record. And I encourage interview panels only to write comments on this that are related to the job that this firm or the candidate is doing for you. So just be cognizant of what you're putting on your notes. So that, just be cognizant. Martina.
And is it okay to, to do this type, like to type right, type right? What year is it? To do this on my computer instead of printing it out and doing it by hand?
That's not a problem at all. I'm a handwriting. If you want to do it on your computer, it's just going to be important that we collect them all is all.
Great. Yeah. It's just that I know that I can't compete with Maya's many gel pens. So I'm just going to resort to the computer.
Pressure for color coding. All right. So I, I really am going to be quiet. I'm going to, I'm going to screen off during your panels. But I will be with you all night and then I'll be here for the debrief. So Judy, unless there's anything else you think you need from me.
Just said, I, um, I don't know if you know this, but Lisa and Carrie offered you up for helping to be timekeepers. Where I think we'll be able to stay on, but please let us know if it doesn't look like we are, we'll do.
I'm keeper during the 40 minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Um, would it be helpful if I had like something prepared for five minutes and I could screen on and, and hold up a five minutes left thing?
I think that would be great.
Okay. I'll, I'll spend some time creating that.
What color will it be? Of course.
All right. Well, thank you for giving me some time. And, oh, Carrie, did you want to add something?
I did, although I'd be delighted to see the color coding in action. Lisa can provide timekeeping during the interviews and then Karen can provide timekeeping during the debrief and discussion afterward.
We've got you covered then Judy. Sounds good.
I'll do my best too, but I do sometimes get involved in the conversation. Good.
As, as, as you should. Well, thank you for giving me some time and I will mute and off screen. And I am confident this will go beautifully.
Okay. And so then Lisa, you are going, you're going to let the firms in. The first one is the Hazard, Young, Atea. Is that right? Yeah. Okay. Cause it's about one minute before.
And once everyone's in and gathered, I'll, I'll start letting them in. So you have a, you have a minute. It is 5:50. We're having just a technical moment with, with one of the, the presenters that is coming. So as soon as the third person is here, we will bring them in. For Chair Newman, we're going to let the consultants in. We still have one that's trying to connect, but we have two in the waiting room that will let in.
Great. I think we should get started. Be great. Welcome. You want to maybe turn off, turn on your cameras? That would be awesome. Thank you, Dr. Gomez.
Hello everyone.
What, my name is Judy Newman. I'm the Chair of the School Board this, this year. And we have all of our board members present. We have Mary Walston, Alicia Hayes, Martina Shabram, Maya Rabasa, Laurel O'Rourke, and Gordon Leifer. And we are going to ask that you start off by introducing yourselves, if you would please. And then we have seven questions to ask tonight. We have a total of 40 minutes for the interview. So with seven questions, if you just do the math, you probably have about five minutes on each question. So, and we have Lisa here will give us a warning if we're getting close to, you know, about five minutes away from the end of the time.
Okay. Well, thank you. And thank you for having us here. I'm wondering where our other two associates are. If you find them, let them know I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm, I'm.
I'm here. I'm over.
What, what about Carolyn?
There was a technical problem she was having, and I think that's the one that Lisa was working with.
Let's say just got a, I can't get in. That's what she's saying. So, well, let's introduce ourselves. How about Lorraine? You go first.
Sure. Hi, I'm Lorraine Garcia. I live here in Brownsville, Oregon. I'm not very far from you. I have been in education for quite a few years. When I retired, I moved up here because I love this area. And I've enjoyed being here. I have a degree from USC in school finance, a doctorate in, in school finance. I have a master's degree in education administration from you, from Santa Barbara. And then my undergraduate degree is at University of New York and a Swigel in education. I've done quite a few different things in education, taught in grades kindergarten all the way through high school. I have been an assistant principal, principal, director, assistant superintendent, and superintendent. My superintendentcy was, I started out in the 1800 student school district and ended up in a school district of 15,000 during my career. I've been very active with all kinds of organizations throughout my career. I have been, I worked for, I, I hadn't planned on telling you all this. That's why I'm watching my time. I had, I did a Bill and Melinda Gates grant for superintendent training for a few years. I have, I think that's it, David. I'll let you talk about.
Thank you. I've had two careers. I started out as a military officer in US Army and I was in active duty and reserves for 24 years. Then I got into education, started out as a, you know, went through all the chairs, elementary teacher, secondary teacher, elementary school administrator, secondary school administrator, principal, assistant superintendent, associate superintendent. I did ed services and HR and then superintendent for eight years in California of Ventura County. I've also been very active with our school administrators associations and their education, especially preparing superintendents. I was, I've been very active with AXA Association California School Administrators. In fact, I was the state president and I've been very active in their academies and training of superintendents and other administrators. I've also helped start the California Latino Superintendent's and Administrators Association. And I was president, became executive director when I retired as superintendent to, to lead that organization. And I've been very active with our other associations, especially those that deal with our, our diverse, diverse student populations such as the, our African-American CASA and our Latino superintendents and our Asian-American school administrators. I think that's about it for right now. I've been with HYA now for over 10 years.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there.
Yeah.
Glad you waited. Had a little trouble getting in. I'm Carolyn McKinnon. I'm an associate with HYA. Been with the firm 15 years. I've done 75, 80 superintendent searches in the time I've been with HYA. I also was a school superintendent for two districts for 16 years, both in California. Have spent a number of years in Montana. I actually came out of Montana originally. My tenure at HYA has given me the opportunity to belong to a larger group of administrators. For instance, we work at the national conference level at the American Association of School Administrators. We, we've worked with the academy, urban superintendents academy, Latino administrators and supervisors, a variety of kinds of opportunities in addition to being able to work with aspiring superintendents and through organizations, colleges, and universities that we work with. I've also had the opportunity to be, work with large school districts, small school districts, a small school district of 430, large district of 730,000. So my experiences give me a broad range of looking for candidates. We, what we call hip pocket. We, we see someone, we think they look good. We put their name and position aside. And when something comes up, we give them a call. We certainly appreciate your opportunity to give us a chance to tell you why we think we would be the best search firm to help you with the upcoming search. And I do want to acknowledge, the last time I was in Eugene was when we, you hired Gus Valderos. And I think he was a really good hire frankly. And it's been my pleasure to stay in touch with him from time to time. So we are anxious to get for, move forward and share a few more things, other questions you might have of us.
Thank you. Yeah. You, because you logged on late, we have seven questions. So I'm going to get right to them. Each one of the board members has one. And so I would say probably keep your answers at about five minutes or, or so. So Mary, pick us up.
Sure. Thank you so much. And welcome to our Zoom meeting. Nice to see you. Nice to meet you all. Based on your experience, please comment on some lessons you have learned about involving different stakeholder groups at different stages of the search process.
Well, I can start there. I've had the opportunity to work with different stakeholder groups. And in fact, bringing in groups and organizations to augment the board's outreach. And when we start the search, we do a great deal of outreach in terms of meeting and talking to individuals that, board members, you'll help us decide who would you like us to interview. And then beyond that, oftentimes you have community groups that come forward that would like to be involved and they want to have their own opportunity to provide you with information. And so we work with them to bring them together, allow them to give you input into what they think would make the best superintendent. Maybe later on, we'll talk about what the word best means, but for the moment, we've had a good deal of experience in doing that. And by and large, it's positive. It can be, there can be a, a little bit of heartburn along the way sometimes because all employee groups don't have the opportunity to have their own group function as a sidebar to the board. Others want to join in?
I think you did a nice job.
Yeah. There we go. I think the engagement process that Karen was talking about is one of the critical, critical parts of what we do. And actually, and that actually is my favorite part because you get the chance to talk to so many different people, figure out what it is that they think is really going well in the district. Because that's part of what we do too, is determine what is really going well. What, what are the wonderful things that everyone loves about the district? And then also some of the critical issues that a district is facing. And every time we talk to a group, whether it's individual board members or when we talk with the students, actually the students are my favorite because they are so willing to share everything that they feel. And they, they have a pretty good perspective because they're the ones that are living it. So to me, the engagement process, whether it is the students, the board, whatever groups that you select for us to engage with, our goal is to be able to bring to you the most, the most important things that they have to share.
I will just add shortly that my favorite part is the interviewing of the board members. Cause it's your vision that you are, that you are looking for someone that is a match with your vision and listening to what you have to say, because there's a lot of good information on the type of candidates we will be looking for and see if there's a match between your vision and the candidate's different characteristics.
And Laurie moved us into the engaged phase, but one of the things that come after all of these interviews is the development of a leadership profile. And the more individuals, groups, organizations you can bring into the fold, the more it seems to people that they had a chance to share with you those things that they value and would like to see you involve in this, this engagement process.
Thank you.
We move to Martina.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, how might stakeholder, the stakeholder engagement process change under COVID pandemic conditions?
Well, I'll start a little bit. I've done four searches. Actually, the last four I've done have all been under COVID restrictions. And what we've learned is that we can have large groups of individuals and maybe larger than we want sometimes. We can have large groups of individuals come in through the Zoom process and we can ask them questions. We have the same questions we ask every group. What are the strengths of the district? What are the challenges a district faces? And what are the desired characteristics of this new superintendent that they see as important? So we've been able to bring in people and bring in groups, even student groups, parent groups. And remember, you're going to help us decide those groups that you want us to meet. But we have not felt that we were constrained in getting people to come in and talk to us. And in fact, I would tell you that we maybe got a better audience because people could come in. It's almost like you came home from work and you got the family something to eat. And then you could jump on the Zoom and share with us from your living room. And in fact, we felt like we maybe got more participation than less by using the Zoom process. We haven't felt that it stifled us.
And we also are quite sophisticated with surveys to get additional information. I kind of equated between when you do research, a qualitative research versus a quantitative research. The quality, the. The quality, the qualitative research, of course, that's more, I see this, the person, the person. And then the quantitative would be the Zoom type. But in essence, you kind of get the same information or very, very similar.
Right. Ready to move to question three? That'd be Maya.
Yes, hi. What methods do you use to engage candidates who have historically been underrepresented in positions like superintendent? And can you share any data that demonstrates the effectiveness of these methods?
I'll jump in. Are you asking how we recruit candidates that are diverse?
Yeah, I can read it again if you'd like. I know it's a long question, but yes, what?
Well, I'm currently, I'm currently finishing a search for LA Unified and assisting the board there. And that is one of their main concerns, to make sure they have a diverse pool, a pool that really understands the issues of equity and budgeting, how to focus on student achievement, those types of things. That's what I meant about the desired characteristics, the leadership profile that Carolyn was talking about. Once we hear what the board is looking for, we go out and search for those types of candidates. Now, HYA is very fortunate. We're a national association. We have over 100, 120 associates all over the country. So using HYA researches, we can identify those types of candidates that would best meet the needs of the school district and the board. Plus, all of us have a lot of contacts with our associations with various organizations at state and federal level with different administrative associations and those that are specifically geared as well towards, say, African-Americans, Latinos, Asian-Americans and so forth. And we identify them and we recruit them. A lot of what we do, quite frankly, is not so much just the application process that they go through once we advertise the position, but going after those that are not really applying. And, and then talk to them about, in a way, kind of convincing them that, you know, it would be a good idea for them to apply. It's maybe Eugene is a place, you know, where they want to come. There might be a really close match with the board. And that's, that's a lot what we do as well.
I would also add that it's an interesting perspective because we, since 1987, since our inception, it's been a hallmark of HYA to bring in underrepresented groups. And I'm old enough to remember a time when women were perceived in the superintendent ranks as not being represented. But what we are doing now, and we keep score, so to speak, in our organization to be sure that we are looking at underrepresented groups. And part of that comes from our process in terms of being involved at the national level and at state levels as well. And one of the things we would like, you would know is, for instance, we do pro bono of the searches for ALAS, the Association of Latino School Administrators. We work closely with ALAS. And we, we just did their last search for their chief executive. So this is a process for us that's very important. And I would hasten to add that it's not a broad brush that we apply. We look at what does the community, what is the community want? Do the people in the district? How do we match those underrepresented groups with groups that are within the district? So it's a fine line sometimes that we draw, but certainly for us, this is not new news, so to speak, because we have always felt like this was something we needed to do, and we've continued that.
Thank you. So I think we're on to Laurel. Oh, do you develop a candidate profile?
Absolutely, we do. I'll start and then the rest of you can join. We start with the candidate profile. Once we do that, all of the interviews, focus groups, small groups, again, starting from students in schools, high schools particularly, all the way to whatever groups there are in your community. Our goal is to coalesce around what we hear from the constituents that are providing information. And remember, we ask the three questions. What are the strengths of the district? What are the challenges? And what are the desired characteristics? From that information, once we glean all of that, then we coalesce all of the interviews we've had with individuals. We put that in a format and we call that the leadership profile. And it is intended to give you board members a look at this, these are the things that your community sees as important. And there'll be many that are perhaps, there'll be many that are not necessarily ones that are universal. But we take a look at that. We will come back and give you a profile. You'll see what your community feels is important in terms of the characteristics of your new superintendent. And that's one of the ways we start the process of looking for candidates. We do not start from the, I've got a back pocket and it's got names in it. We're not interested in what we have. What we're interested is, what is it you want? What do you need? And how can we help you bring that to fruition?
Also in that profile, we interview each one of you separately. And same questions are asked. And then we present without mentioning who said what, you know, that profile to you at a board meeting. So you get to see what you, you as a board are looking for and what the community is looking for. Then you decide you just want to go with one or the other. Usually, you know, you blend both of them and you come up with the desired characteristics of a superintendent for Eugene.
Let me just add to that just for a moment. What we're trying to do is without identifying who said what, teasing out all of the things that each group felt was important, even the students. And we actually have a survey and you, I don't know whether you'll ever be able to use it or not, but it looks at all of the things that people have in common in terms of these groups of individuals. And you get a sense of what do they all agree on. So when we come to you with our leadership profile, we present it to you at a board meeting with your permission at a board meeting. So every one of your constituents that contributed can see and hear what, oh, I was, I was included. I can see, I can see my comments, not necessarily verbatim, but you'll see many of them. So it's a, it may be, it's the launching pad for us in terms of that profile. And that's when we start looking for the, start recruiting. And that's, that's another phase for us.
Thank you. So I'm number five. And my question is, can you tell us about a time when you successfully matched a candidate with a district that had a distinct candidate profile?
Could you elaborate a little on that?
That's, I'm going to go to the group that wrote these questions, but I think maybe it's really giving us an example of how you looked at a profile and maybe a real life example. And you actually were able to take that profile and then how you tailored your recruiting and what kind of match you ended up with.
I can start if you want.
David, I'll follow you.
Well, I remember a district, in fact, Carolyn and I, Carolyn and I did near, in Los Angeles, where the superintendent had basically was arrested for more money than he was supposed to be making. So you can imagine the board, the community were just totally in distress over the situation. So we had to find under the, with the profile, somebody not just was, that was an instructional leader, not just that was trustworthy and honest, but someone that the community would trust to kind of mend the, the bad feelings that the community had for administration, the school board and the school district. And Carolyn and I were able to find somebody who was a minister and also an assistant superintendent and who wanted to become a superintendent. And he was there for what, eight or nine years? He just retired a few months ago and he did a wonderful job. So that's a real good example. We had to go beyond just your, your typical instructional or budget. We had to get into the emotional, psychological, social, maybe even spiritual, who knows?
Let me tag to David. This is, we call, this is the board's awesome responsibility. You're supposed to find the leader that best matches what it is your constituents are looking for. And finding the next leader for your district, that's the most important role you have. And this is just not a hunt, you know, we sometimes talk about being headhunters and jobhunters, et cetera. But that, this is not that kind of the job. This is the work that you as the board want us to do in order for you to understand what stakeholders want in this new leader. What is it they want? And then we want to match the wishes of the community and the board, of course, to the leader that's the best match. There are lots of great candidates for superintendent out there. Not all will be a match for you and not all will be a match for any district we're doing. So there's no such thing as the best leader. What is there is only the best leader for your district. And that's the part where we think you should get chills down your spine because this is such an important part of the process that you're going to do. And it can make such a difference in your community if the, if the community can't coalesce around the person that you choose as your new superintendent, that's a loss. And so we, we take this very seriously in terms of, it's not just a match. It's, it's a real match. It's someone who brings to the table all those desired characteristics that people are looking for. And they can serve you well in the long haul.
And as you know, as a board, this is probably your most important task as a governing board is to, to find a leader for the district, a superintendent.
Lori, you got anything to add to that?
The only thing I wanted to add is that, that having worked now with multiple boards and selections of their superintendents. And my last one was actually, I did the search for the ESD Lynn Benton Lincoln, ESD superintendent there. And that's one of the things that we really were looking at because that's a different kind of superintendent. But there are an awful lot of constituencies under that. You have all the school districts, you have all of the, all the different agencies that they're working with. Pulling that together and coming up with a good profile, which the board did. They took the information that we collected from all the different stakeholders, came up with great criteria and characteristics for us that when we were able to go out and find somebody that was actually local and understood of what was going on in Oregon and in, in the school districts within the three counties. But it all hinged on what the board had done, all the work that the board did by taking all the information that was collected. We were able to find a fantastic match for the ESD. So it really comes back, as Carolyn says and everyone says, is that we bring you information, you take that information and you give us back the information that you want us to use, because we'll bring you more than you. We have a tendency to bring you so much information that we sometimes fear that we overload you. So we want to make sure that what we bring you is very clear, concise, and that you have a chance to go and do a good job of evaluating it and then providing us with the next information to be able to bring you good candidates.
Thank you. Gordon?
Thanks. So this kind of builds on that about disagreements, not in the community, but within the board itself. We wanted to ask if you could provide us a specific example of a time when you helped a board that had significant disagreements among its members to reach agreement and move forward. And tell us, what was the point of conflict that you helped resolve and how did you go about resolving?
Maybe I'll start with what I think is the prelude to the question that you're asking. We, we have a process when we bring you a group of candidates, you get down to five or six. And we've said, we think these are, are matches for you. And then we, we give you tiers. Actually, the first tier would be those we think would, would match carefully with you. And then some others that have some promise, but maybe not as specific. But the point about that is we come around to the idea that these folks are, are going to match for you. And then when you always know that there's someone, that we have favorites. And so what we do is we sit around the table with you, that can be virtually or in person. And we talk, we have you share with each other what you think were the best characteristics of someone. This is why I wanted to, I wanted this person. And then you all share with each other what you think was the best person. You also then share your concerns. Why don't I think this would be the best person? And once you could do that sharing out, then we ask you to vote. And, and we do that as in using, you know, a ballot, so to speak, so that you're not influenced by each other. And because you're all powerful and important and smart, and we know you could talk each other into anything. So we try to make it such that it comes across as a clean process. And our goal behind that is to help the board, again, coalesce around candidates that they see. This is, this person is going to work well for us. And while I like this person, I can see why this person shouldn't move on to the next round. And that's part of the process that we use. And we go at it systematically. And sometimes it takes a while, I would add, because there are times when you have to convince each other of what you think is best for your district. I haven't personally had any real cantankerous feelings on the part of people who had a desire for someone who didn't make the cut. Generally, there's a respectful dialogue and, and people see, I can see why this would be best, even though I really still like this kind of thing. And then you get a chance to go one step further when you have your personal meetings with those candidates. And then you can develop questions and we'll help you, if we are fortunate enough to work with you, we'll help you develop questions which would, again, tease out what it is you want to know about these candidates. And it would help you get to that, that round where you have finalist and then semifinalist. Laurie?
No, I don't. I think that what you said is correct. Carolyn and I did a search not too long ago that there was some disagreement on the board. It was not a really negative disagreement, but there was a disagreement about what type of superintendent they were looking for. With the process Carolyn described, there was a tremendous amount of dialogue. And the board was, I gave them a lot of credit because there was disagreement on some specific issues. But by the time we got through them talking with each other about what it is that was the problem, what kinds of things that they were really looking for, and then having them go through the interview process of the, of the people, even though they may not have been everyone's first candidate or second candidate. If we were able to then have them talk about what they saw in the interviews, because the interviews changed their minds. And the interviews really were a big, big help in this process because then the people who were one-sided or the other side were able to say, well, this is what I saw and this is what I now see. And I think that really helped a lot. So following the process all the way through, sometimes moving past the disagreement into actually some interviews and then talking about the interviews and seeing what the candidates have to offer really can do, can, can change people's minds.
And I'll just finish this section. What Lori is describing could have been, could have left some board members feeling out. This is a district where you have elementary and unified school districts. And so there are representatives from groups that are not necessarily all within the same organization. So that ability to be able to help them see that this was the best thing for them and they felt it was the best thing for them. There was some lobbying going on in this process, and that happens. Sometimes it happens openly and publicly, and sometimes it happens behind the scenes. But there was some lobbying going on. And there was a concession made by the larger group, the board members who represented the largest student population. There was a concession made to them that if anything happens with this candidate and it doesn't work out, then we won't come back out, we'll come back out to the candidate that you felt would best serve our district. So there's some give and take. And that was, I think frankly, was maybe the, the position that allowed people to move on. And, and don't forget, maybe you're not at the table, but you have employee groups, parent groups, civic groups, all of them may be in the background attempting to help you make the best decisions for your new superintendent.
Thank you. So we have one last question, and I think that's with Alicia.
It is. Is there anything you would like us to know that you have not already covered?
Oh, let's see. I gotta think a minute about that. There's so many things in a search that, that can make things happen or not make things happen. But one of the things that sometimes we hang up a little bit on is the is the looking for the professionalism in the board and in the superintendent candidates and looking at differences of opinion, how candidates are able to show the show the board their ability to to be professional, to make concessions, to look at the greater good of of the organization per se. And candidates are aware that these opinions count in terms of whether or not they're going to make the next level. So I think one of the things that we look for is is candidates who are professional, who understand, and I, when I say professional, I don't mean they're they're wearing three piece suits. I mean, these are people that understand this is not a place where I get my way. This is a place where I'm going to work with you as a board and you have to see that I'm someone you can work with. And that's the professionalism we're talking about. You have some thorny issues. And being able to bring someone to the table, including your superintendent, and value everyone's opinion is is very important. Others? David or Lori, you gonna chime in?
Well, a- as a board, my recommendation, of course, is find someone as the best match with your leadership profile, your desired characteristics. So really think those through, and it's really what the district needs. But you also want to think about the confluent part of it, you know, like getting along with the person, those types of things. But sometimes that comes maybe a little later, you know. We talk about the right chemistry. You'll you'll have a good gut feeling about the person. But, you know, I I would say, from my point of view, being a Latino and stuff, you know, give give diversity one a chance. It is really, really worthwhile to have a diverse group in your leader, as your part of your leadership team. And that's, that would be my advice. A lot of times we get comfortable. And and I know boards are really, really being very well trained that, you know, they they are the governing body for the district. So they they make decisions in the best interest of the district and their students. And that goes for selecting a superintendent as well.
I think that the important piece about this is to believe that you're philosophically aligned, the board and the in your superintendent. These are, I I've just said, these, you're facing thorny issues. There's so much going on so that if you feel like you're in sync in terms of those things that you believe and value, it is easier to make concessions when you recognize and feel that everybody, everyone wants this to work. Everyone wants the district to move forward and for the students to grow and learn and for the parents to feel valued and important. It's a, it's a lot on your plate because you're charged with being the people who keep this ship afloat. And every couple of times a month, come together and and give security to the people that are counting on you. I don't know that we've ever, and I've been around a while. I don't know that we've ever faced what you're facing. If I had a hat, I'd say hats off, because you are, you're really doing the omen service in terms of keeping districts moving forward for kids. And there are many people who who might want to derail you and will have different opinions, but certainly being respectful of different opinions. And that's the diverse piece of that I see around the table. Anything else, Lori, you want to wrap up?
No, I just commend the board for taking on this project. And whoever they select, I wish you good luck in finding the best match. I had the pleasure of sitting into in the audience for your last interview in 2015, watching the process from the from the audience's perspective and watching the board at that time. And it was, it was really very interesting to to see the process. And I would love to see it again.
Well, we wanted to let you know, we appreciate your consideration of our firm. We're confident that if you were to choose us, that we would bring you the experience and the professional background that you need to help you make the best decision in terms of hiring your next excellent superintendent and leading your your district. So thank you for the chance to present to you and and your patience as well.
Yes, thank you very much. Pleasure meeting all of you virtually.
Thank you for your time. I'm really sorry about the technical difficulties. I'm glad you all made it, your whole team. It was a pleasure to meet you. So just in terms of next steps, we're interviewing three firms tonight. And then a week from tonight, November 3rd, at our next board meeting, we will be voting on which one we'll select. So that is the plan. And we're really grateful for your time and being here tonight.
Thank you.
Very much. Bye. Good night.
Bye.
Bye.
So board, we have till be back promptly at 6:40. And a minute before, if you can manage it. So take a little break.
It is 6:40. If everybody's back and ready to go, we have our next firm in the Audience Alma Advisory Group. We are bringing in to be panelists now.
Great. Thank you. Are you all here?
Hi, yes, I've got Kathleen Shiverdecker. And I know Sylvia Flowers is also, I believe, on the call.
Thank you. I saw her a second ago, but I don't see her right at the moment.
She may, she may be changing her name to include Alma.
Okay.
Let me check where she is. I know she was there.
Well, Lisa will be on the lookout for her to rejoin.
There she is.
Oh, good. So I want to welcome you tonight to this interview. And I'm going to introduce myself. I'm Judy Newman. I'm the board chair. And we have all of our board members present, Mary Walston, Alicia Hayes, Martina Shabram, Maya Rabasa, Gordon Leifer, and Laurel O'Rourke. So we're going to, we have, we'd like to first have you introduce yourselves. And then we have seven questions for you that we're going to rotate through the board. Everyone has a question to ask you. And with seven questions, just to give you an idea, we have a total of 40 minutes for this interview. So probably, you know, think about five minutes per question or so, so you can pace yourselves. Sound like a plan?
Sounds great. Thank you.
Then I'm going to turn it over to you to introduce yourself and your team.
Wonderful. Well, it's a pleasure to meet you all this evening. My name is Monica Santana Rosen. I'm the CEO and founder of Alma Advisory Group. Alma is a mission-driven organization. We've been, we've been around for five years, working with school systems all over the country. It's an honor to be with you tonight and looking forward to sharing a lot more about us. I'll turn it over to Sylvia so she can introduce herself.
Good evening, everybody. I am Sylvia Flowers. I'm a member of the Alma team and I am based in Nashville, Tennessee, and have been working on executive searches with Alma for a little over a year and a half now.
Thanks, Sylvia. Go ahead, Kathleen.
All right. So my name is Kathleen Shiverdecker. Honored to be on this call with you. So I'm a fellow West Coast provider and have been working with Monica for about the past 10 years and working with Alma for over two years now in the executive search process. We have been supporting this level of executive search for many years. And we are delighted to be with you on this, on this journey this evening. So we're eager to hear your feedback and provide our input about how we can support your search.
Thank you. Mary Walston has our first question. You better unmute, please, Mary.
Yeah, sorry. Sorry about that. Welcome and thank you all for being here. I appreciate it. First question is, based on your experience, please comment on some lessons you have learned about about involving different stakeholder groups at different stages of the search process.
I'll get us started. And I'm watching the time. So for us, I would say involving stakeholder groups is a critical part of our process. And we would say it's it's not just gathering stakeholder input. It's really engaging the community in authentic ways in the process. And we would say it's, it's not just gathering stakeholder input, it's really engaging the community in authentic ways in the process. And so for us, it's important to work with the board to first understand who are the key stakeholders out there? And not just who are the people who typically show up, but who are the people who, for whatever reason, have either been excluded or haven't been easy to get, to come out and to participate? And how do we sit down with them to have real, meaningful conversations and create the space where they can speak their truth? Say what's most important to them, what their values are for the future of 4J? And that's what we're really interested in. And the lessons we've learned have been a few. Sylvia and Kathleen can speak to this. Here's what I will say. The first is to set our dates for community engagement early and to get the word out there as best as we can. And one of the challenges is if the notice comes out too short, really undercuts the effort of meeting with people and, and speaking with them. The second is not just to have, first of all, don't, if you're going to do a town hall, you know, you have to allow for small roundtable conversation. So we can't, we don't want to have a conversation where there are 50 people in the room and the one person with the mic gets to say what they want to say. We like to have smaller facilitated conversations where everybody gets, gets to share what they came to share. And then finally, that we share, that we include surveys. So if you couldn't make it to the event for whatever reason, or if you're nervous about coming out, you want some anonymity, that you're able to, to participate and share your perspective in different ways. Sylvia, I'd love to know anything you would add to what I shared.
The, the thing I would add is probably something that we've all learned during the pandemic and post-pandemic is that you can actually do a lot virtually. And we have found that giving people both in-person and virtual opportunities to participate does really allow you to reach more people, and you don't have to wait until the evening to do events. You can schedule things where people can be in their homes and still have the opportunity to participate. So I would say that's another, if there are any benefits to this pandemic, it's really having the opportunity to talk to people where they are and not forcing them to drive all over town when they can do some things from the comfort of their own homes or their own work locations.
Well, I'm going to ask Martina to ask her question, but you might have started answering it already.
Yes, thank you so much. So how might the stakeholder engagement process change under COVID pandemic conditions, as you were just saying?
Yeah. Sylvia, Kathleen, do you want to answer?
So I would say, you know, we have run entire searches virtually during this pandemic. And all aspects, from the stakeholder engagement meetings to one-on-one interviews with key stakeholders. It allows us to, if people cannot attend large group meetings, that then we have the opportunity to meet them on their schedule. And from the design of the process and co-creating that with the board or search committee, we've been able to do that completely virtually as well. And then particularly involving other stakeholders, including central office staff, teachers, principals, and even students, meeting them during the school day when their principals can pull them out to be a part of not only information gathering on the front end, but also being a part of the interview process and having an opportunity to interact with finalist candidates. So it has been an amazing opportunity to really provide opportunities for everyone to be a part of the process at multiple points. I think the other thing that was important is you can obviously record interviews and record opportunities. And, and that allows board members to view interviews and, and have the opportunity to see all candidates. Even if schedules don't allow for the, the in-person or the real-time interviews, board members could then have the opportunity to watch and review interviews at any point along the, the selection process. Kathleen, were you going to jump in?
Yeah, I was. And so we, we would add that the student voice is incredibly important in this process. And we have found in our experience that with the virtual engagement, that we've been able to invite students in many different capacities to participate in, in the, the stakeholder engagement process. And we want to make sure that student voice plays a critical role in not only the, not only the, the interview engagement process, but just the response to the questions that the board has about the most important aspects of the search process for the superintendent. And so in our experience, engaging students in focus groups, in interviews, in the finalist candidate engagement process has been incredibly important. And so that's a key aspect of our engagement of stakeholders, for sure. So just wanted to make sure that we put that, put that on the table as well.
Yeah. I, I would just add real quickly that what, what we're seeing now versus in the spring is that we're in a little bit of a hybrid territory in general. We're not sure if in-person will work or if people will prefer virtual. So we're doing more hybrid gatherings. And so people who are comfortable coming in person with COVID safety precautions can, and people who want to stay home and attend virtually can do that. So we're, we're really flexible with the different conditions and watching, you know, what's happening with COVID, with variants, with vaccination rates, and with the policies within the district to do what works best within your specific context. One thing that I want to add for us is that, that engagement, as Sylvia was, and Kathleen were alluding to, begins at the start of the process. But then what we learn in that process, we use to design and craft each stage of the interview process. So the, the, the experiences that people share with us, the themes that come up through every part of the process end up becoming part and parcel of the job description. We use those as well to design interview questions and activities. And then we look for ways in which we can have the community participate, most likely at the finalist stage as well, and give input on all candidates.
Thank you. So we're on to question three, which is Maya.
Hi. What methods do you use to engage candidates who have historically been underrepresented in positions like superintendent? And can you share any data that demonstrates the effectiveness of these methods?
Yes, we're very passionate about this topic. And here's what I have to say. Every step of our process is designed to mitigate bias. And it starts with making sure that as a board, there's real clear and shared agreement about the skills that are most important for the role. And then every step of the process is designed to measure only those skills. We do anti-biased training for all interviewers. It's something Alma insists on. And what we found over and over and over again, that by being clear on the skills, you, and designing a process where, where candidates can demonstrate their skills, you elevate the rigor of the process. And in so doing, you have more leaders of color emerge. It's just that simple. And the only reason is because we've taken away a lot of that noise. We've mitigated the bias. And in order to do that, it means we have to be your critical friends, your partners, sometimes your mirror, your coaches. And it's difficult to manage bias every step of the way. So we value the process more than we do the recruitment. For us, delivering diverse talented pool is the baseline, but it's the process that gets you the end result. And I was just looking at this before the call. See if I can pull it up. But what we're seeing is we've got a very, a great track record of diversity in the candidates we've put forward. So let me get you the exact numbers. Oh, where are they? Please, please give me one moment. And if any of my colleagues have it, here it is. I found it. Our finalists have been 40, 41% black, 9% Latinx, 36% white, 14% Asian, and 50% identifying as female, 50% identifying as male. The hires that have been selected by our candidates, I'm sorry, the hires selected by us, 36% black, 18% Asian, and 73% female. As though we're, and the process, not guaranteeing you a leader of color, we're guaranteeing you a fair and equitable process.
Thank you. Okay, number four to Laurel.
Hello. How do you develop a candidate profile?
Kathleen, you better take this one.
Oh, my goodness. So we, we thrive in developing the, the job description that leads to the candidate profile. And we are careful with the words "profile" and fit in this process because we want to make sure that everything that we do is based on the competencies that we define for the role. And so we work very closely with the, in this case, the board, the search committee, to define what the, the very specific responsibilities and the, the competencies for the role are. And from that, we, we work together with the team to figure out in our search processes, what the, the very specific skills and leadership background and experiences that, that candidates have for this role. So it all, as Monica described, and I'm sure she will continue to describe in this conversation, it's all about the competencies that we define for the role. And that's what leads to the very, the very experiences that candidates have that are, that are designed to mitigate bias and lead toward every candidate that has the competencies or that has demonstrated the competencies that are aligned to the job description are able to demonstrate in the interview experience. So we care very much about what candidates are able to describe in terms of the experiences that they've had, the evidence that they are able to provide related to the, 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 the job description and how that relates to the competencies that the team is committed to in terms of what the, what the candidates are able to, to share.
I, I just want to give an example of this. And Kathleen, it's the, she described it so well. It's one of her superpowers with our searches. But what I will say is, as an example, you know, what, typically when we start a superintendent search process, we start by having one-on-one conversations with each board member. We really want to know what brought each of you to be on the board, what you hope will be different because you were here, and what your hopes are for the district in the future. It starts to paint a picture for us because, of course, you know, you, you represent your communities. And from there, we then go and really, in these conversations with the community, work to understand what is rising to the level of huge importance for, for the people that we get to meet with. So a great example is when we completed the superintendent search in Denver Public Schools, the, the board members talked a great deal about the, the fact that they, they wanted to build stronger connections with their community. When we spoke with the community, it became clear what the community wanted was community-centered leadership. So what they talked about was not just being asked for information. We had a community member said, we want a seat at the table. And board members really talked about that a lot. So in that particular instance, that became something that was listed and described in the, in the job description very clearly. So we want the job description and profile to paint, to help tell the story about what 4J is, what makes you special and a special place to come lead. But then what are the specific things that the board is really looking for that leader to be able to champion, steward, and to be able to do well in order to be successful in the role?
Thank you, Monica. And I would add that in the job description, we care so greatly about this step in the process. And the reason for that is that we believe that in the narrative of the job description, we want potential candidates to see themselves reflected in that so that they can understand what the competencies are that we collectively have defined and that they are able to share experiences that reflect their very specific experience in the regards of the competencies. So we take this part of the process very seriously, and we look forward to hearing your input on what those competencies might be for the role. And as Monica mentioned, the stakeholder input is incredibly important in that regard. We want the focus groups and the interviews and, and all of the, all of the feedback that we receive to be reflected in the language of the job description and of the interview experiences. So that's a really critical part of our process and something that we take very seriously.
The only thing I would add is that I've had so many candidates say that they were compelled by the way the job description was written. And that is obviously a credit to Kathleen's writing. But also, we try to be really honest about what the work looks like, what's most important, and what they should expect if they were to be selected for the role. So if you take a look at any of our job descriptions, you will see that the language is very descriptive, and it is very provocative and attracts people who could be really inspired by the work in the organizations that we support.
Thank you. So we're on number five, and that's my question. So it's, can you tell us about a time when you successfully matched a candidate from a district that had a really distinct candidate profile? So we're looking maybe for an example of a profile of the candidate that you have put together and, and how you matched that?
I, I think I'd like to go back to Denver Public Schools. We are, we are in the midst of another superintendent search at the moment, but this was one that was pretty exciting for us and, and well demonstrates the, the values we bring to this work and, and, and the end result. As I mentioned earlier, Denver Public Schools, you know, there were several important priorities for the board. One was this idea of community-centered leadership that I already spoke to. Another was an idea of racial equity for the district. And, and yet another was around, what, what I would say is bridging what felt like a growing sort of community that felt very polarized between the central office and the community and between, you know, there was a whole debate in the city of Denver about being reform or anti-reform and, and these different concepts. And then when we spoke with people who, who identified squarely in one camp or another, what they all talked about was, we need a unifier. We need a unifier to bring us together. And the final candidate who emerged is a gentleman named Alex Marrero. And he is half Cuban, half Dominican. He was in New York City in Rochester, which was a significantly smaller school system. Let's see, Denver has something like, is it 90,000 students maybe, and Rochester had significantly less. But at every stage in the interview process, and we had really outstanding finalists, we fell, we fell in love with all three. we thought, we fell in love with all three of our finalists. But what Alex did that set him apart, you know, he flew to Denver for the interview, even though he had no chance of seeing anyone in person. And he, he walked around the city, just got to know the place. He really, from his heart, had incredible examples of the ways in which he had partnered with the community to design, the, to design innovative things in his work and had incredible examples of ways in which he had advocated for students and created positive change for students in all of his previous experiences. And then he met with, then he was interviewed by the students, and he just answered their, they had some of the most difficult questions of anybody, and he answered them with grace and was very open in that dialogue. And so he was, I think, an unusual profile because he came from a smaller place. And, but there he was, demonstrating the skills that the district needed. And so we were proud that we found a candidate who aligned so well with everything that the board was asking for in, in that particular case. And that, and he was chosen because he demonstrated it, not just to the board and not just by saying how he would do things, but by explaining how he had done things and by speaking so, in such compelling ways and being so interested in learning from all of the people he met, and the teachers, the principals, the direct reports, and of course, the board and the students and others. So anyway, that's, that's the story of Alex in Denver.
Oops, thank you. We have Gordon for number six.
Thank you. So we wanted to ask you to provide us with a specific example of a time when you helped a board that had significant disagreements among its members to reach agreement and move forward. I know you, this may be Denver again, and lots of money and very bitterly fought conflicts. But if you could say more, what was the point of the conflict that you helped to resolve? And how did you go about resolving it?
I, I want to say a few things, and I, and I won't, I, I won't talk just about Denver. I, I think any board, this is the very most important decision a board has to make. It just is. And it's the most important charge you have as a board, and you don't want to mess it up. And, you know, the, the toughest part at the beginning of the process is truly to understand and identify where the common ground is and what everyone really agrees to. And so by our, by getting clear on that and taking that time to understand that upfront, you can move forward in a way where everyone knows where everyone stands, right? Even if there are things some might disagree on, we're all, we are all in agreement that there are these five or six things that we're going to prioritize. That's number one. Number two is that we, we facilitate these conversations I spoke about earlier, where we bring people together and we force them to focus on the evidence. What did the person actually say and do, not how they made you feel? That is really hard to do. And for the board, in that process, the board begins to read shared language about what they care about and how they define it when they see it with the competent, with the skills. So what I would say, and you know, with that backdrop, that in Denver, for sure, right, the, the board in Denver, they valued and celebrated that they all, they were very different, different people. It wasn't a monolith. They had different points of view, and they felt that helped them make better decisions as a group. And the, the candidates had to be able to, you know, pass muster, if you will, with, with each one of them. And, and I think it was that facilitated process at the end that, you know, allowed them to push and challenge each other's thinking as well as really just see the candidates for who they were, not their organizational affiliation, not, not any of the other things that don't, don't have to do with actually how they lead. And that's in the end how we were able to get a good agreement, good level agreement. We did have one, one board member who did not approve the vote in the end, but everybody else did, and, and they were very pleased with that result. Sylvia and Kathleen and I have worked with a, a number of different boards. And Sylvia, I'm wondering if you've got another example. We've got a little more than a minute and a half.
Yeah, the only thing I would add is the boards and search committees that really embrace our process. One, we will certainly help push you to look for the evidence and go back to what you saw and heard demonstrated in the interview process. And then those who really embrace the process also begin to challenge one another to go back to the evidence that, that their peer, their colleague saw or heard in the interview process. The other thing I would say is, what we would love to see is, by the time we get to the finalist process, the candidates who emerge are all clearly able and have demonstrated that they could do the job. And the, the deliberation is really hoping to build consensus among you that you would feel comfortable that any one of those finalist candidates could do the job. And hopefully, we get to a place where there's agreement on the one candidate that you all can get behind and support in doing the job because they have all demonstrated through their evidence that they meet the competencies that we agreed on in the beginning.
Great. Good sticking to the time. Wonderful. Okay, we have the seventh person, and that's Alicia. She has our last question.
Are there, is there anything you would like us to know that you have not yet already covered? Sorry, it's really small writing, covered.
I love that question. Kathleen, Sylvia, anything that's important for people to know that we haven't shared yet? I, I, yeah, go ahead, Kathleen.
I was just going to say something that I hope that the, this board walks away with this evening is just our fierce commitment to engaging stakeholders in this process. We care so deeply about the voice of students and of teachers and of staff and of community and of this team in what matters most as we design job description, interview experiences, and stakeholder engagement throughout the process. So that's what's top of mind for me, especially with the focus on student and staff engagement in the process. So that's something that I hope the board walks away with for sure.
Thank you, Kathleen. I think something I didn't share that I was thinking about earlier today is the importance of having conversations with people in their native language. And something that we've been really proud of is our ability, not ju, not just to have interpreters who speak Spanish, but to be able to lead meetings in Spanish. I'm, I'm the daughter of immigrant parents. I grew up in a Spanish-speaking household. And it, it's a real point of pride for me when I can address communities in Spanish and working with the district to understand who are those, what are those other ethnicities and communities that, that exist that, that we can create spaces where they don't have to listen through a filter, but they can just participate in their own language. So that's something we're, we're proud of and wanted to share, I meant to share earlier as well. Yeah. Sylvia, anything you would add?
No. I, I'd say one last point, and then, and then we'll turn it back to you all. You know, we come to this work as practitioners. We've, all three of us and majority of the team at Alma have been in district leadership roles, in education leadership roles. And so we care a great deal about, you know, we, we understand the complexity and the unique nature that every place has its, its, its things that make it special and unique and different. And it's our job to come in and really understand those things. So I, I think on the surface, our process is the same. We follow similar steps everywhere we go, but the results end up looking really different because they're really based on who the organization is and the unique place and time that you're in and the place you're trying to go in your future. So we talk about this concept of what, what we call, well, I didn't make this up, but I heard someone say it, and it really resonated, contextual humility and this idea that we don't have preconceived notions. We come wanting to learn first, and then we apply our expertise to help you reach your goal. And that's what Alma stands for, in case you're wondering. Alma is La, is based on the Latin word "to foster", which we chose because for us, it's not really our work, it's your work. And we're here to help you to do your work further, better, faster because we were here as your partners in that. Not, and to be fair, we carry a great deal of the load, especially in the search process. But, but we really, we take great pride in that. We, we want you to be in a better place. And, and we're hoping as a board, there are things that you'll be able to learn and, and adapt and, and carry on after your time with us.
Great. Thank you so much. We really enjoyed meeting you. Thank you for your time this evening and being with us. In terms of next steps, we're interviewing three firms tonight. And then we will spend a little time talking amongst ourselves at the end of the evening. And then a week from tonight, November third, is our next board meeting, and we'll be voting on selecting a firm at that time and probably checking references between now and then.
Excellent.
I think that's it. Again, we're grateful for your time and glad you could be here. I know the time zones are really different, so have a good evening.
Likewise, and thank you so much for the consideration. We really appreciate it. Take care.
Thank you so much.
Okay, board, we have a break now until, I think promptly at seven-thirty. See you all then. I'm Judy Newman and I'm the board chair. And we have all of our board members here present, Mary Walston, Alicia Hayes, Martina Shabram, Maya Rabasa, Laurel O'Rourke, and Gordon Leifer. And, um, we are going to be asking you seven questions. We have forty minutes total for the interview. We're going to start out by asking you each to introduce yourself. And then probably, we'll probably have about thirty-five minutes left. So each question, and we rotate asking the questions through the board. And so probably just try to pace yourselves. You probably have about five minutes per question.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you, Judy. Um, I, I'd like Janet to go ahead and introduce herself. You're gonna have to unmute Janet.
Thank you. And good afternoon, everyone. My name is Janet Dixon. I'm located in Alexandria, Louisiana. It's in the center of the state. Uh, I am a retiree since twenty twelve from United Parts of Service where I served in corporate America for twenty-five of those years. I was also fortunate enough to have been elected a school board member for seven years here in Rapids Parish. And I have been with MacPherson and Jacobson since twenty thirteen. And I'm glad to be here this afternoon.
I'm Doug Nelson. I have a little different resume. I've been involved with public education for over fifty years. And I have a deep belief in the value of public education. I've been a teacher, a principal, a superintendent, and a school board member. I retired after nineteen years as the superintendent, uh, from Ben Lapine. Uh, prior to that, I served as a superintendent in Pullman, Washington, another university town. Um, I mentioned I was a school board member. I served almost eight years, um, on the High Desert E S D Board, and I was just appointed to the Columbia Gorge E S D Board. And while on the High Desert E S D Board, I represented Central Oregon on the OSBA Board. And I was fortunate enough to serve as the president of OSBA in two thousand sixteen. Um, I also do a little bit of work for the University of Oregon in the Principal Preparation Program. I'm in my ninth year of doing that work. And, uh, in the course I teach, uh, we have, um, many four J employees, I think from every one of your schools, from all the alternative schools to uh, in all of the mainstream schools. So I've gotten to know, uh, four J kind of vicariously and to get to know its character. I also served as a consultant for school improvement for a variety of schools, um, with very diverse backgrounds. And doing that really helped me get to walk into a district and school and under, get to know its character and its, um, uh, the values of that school. This is important work for me. Uh, my purpose is to develop leaders, and this is one way I can help develop leaders through our transparent, inclusive, thorough, and comprehensive program. To help you work with you to make the best possible decision.
Thanks, Doug. Gustavo?
Glad to see some familiar faces. I'm Gustavo about that as superintendent of schools in the Edmund School District in Edmunds, Washington, uh, four-time superintendent. Superintendent previously in, uh, California, in the Central Valley, as well as Orange County before becoming, uh, superintendent Eugene and now Edmunds School District. I have had the pleasure of working on, at all levels of the school system, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as what I call both sides of the house, both the instructional side where, uh, had the oversight of, uh, feeder group of schools, but also the admin services side, which is everything that supports instruction. As well as, uh, being in Oregon, uh, for twenty-four of my years, really familiar with the state dynamics. Sat, uh, was a superintendent representative on the State Board of Education, which is the most diverse board in the state of Oregon, really. Uh, honored to be able to do that. Also serving on the Oregon Department of Education on the multilingual learner team. As well as Costa's Equity Committee before I left the state, as well as serving on the O S A A executive team. So glad to be here and again honored to, to represent McPherson Jacobson.
Thank you. My name is Steve Louder. I'm, I've been a superintendent for over thirty years and almost forty years in education. Um, so I feel like I'm really just still a teacher. Um, because it's about making a difference in the lives of children. That's what this is all about. That's why I do this. I don't need the money to do this. I I do this because it's a calling. It is why it's about making the communities, the schools um, better, making our democracy better, about helping schools choose the right leadership. I have a diverse history in the different kinds of schools, but my last district was in the middle of the Central Valley, thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand kids. Highly diverse, uh, all poverty. Um, uh, lots of gang activity, and it was about making a difference for those kids. That's what this was about. I didn't need to do that. In fact, it was a dangerous position. I had shootings outside my office once a month. And I did it because it was about making a difference in the lives of the children. They deserved a better education. And I wanted to put a few bricks in the wall to make that difference. That's why I do this, to try to make a difference in the lives of those children that are underserved, underrepresented, and they need a voice. And that's why we're here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your introductions. Good to see everyone. Uh, so I'm going to start off with Mary Walston. She has our first question.
Thank you and welcome, uh, to all of you and good to see certain people again. Anyway, uh, based on your experience, please comment on some lessons you have learned about involving different stakeholder groups at different stages of the search process.
Well, uh, let me start by saying that the stakeholder groups, first of all, you need to have all the stakeholder groups represented. You need to have a wide range of voices heard, all voices heard to the extent possible. And it's not just our average student body kids. It's our, um, diversity of the student voice is extremely important. You, you need to talk to the Metta Group, the, the Gay Straight Alliance kids, the B S U kids, the Pan Am Group. You need to talk to the, to the handicapped parents and students and talk to them about, you know, what their needs are and are we serving those needs? So they need to be involved in all stages of this. And, and our process allows that to happen. Um, I used to think that those in-person meetings were the key, that you had those personal relationships. But I found over the pandemic, and I've done five or six searches during the pandemic, and what I find is because we've done the virtually and recorded them, um, more people get a chance to weigh in on this. There, there, more of the voices get to be heard throughout the entire process. And that means gathering information from the community, the stakeholder, your four communities, the stakeholder groups, um, in, in the interviewing process, in the, uh, candidate forum process where people get a chance to hear the, the candidates speak. But it's about recruiting the right fit. And, and that whole process develops a picture of what that right fit is. And to us, that's critical. Um, anybody else wanna, wanna chip in, uh, other than the fact that we need to have that voice heard in all stages, including the interview stage? Um, Doug, Gus, Janet?
Yeah.
Yes, if I could just add something here. I think that is probably the nuts and bolts of a search. Uh, we did a search and we hired MacPherson and Jacobson when, when I was on the board. And that part proved to be the most important part because of the input that we can receive from all of the different stakeholders. We're talking community as well as internal employees and those of interest because, uh, we find out from our queries and from communicating and asking the questions and getting the feedback that we uncover things that, that are important to these groups and will prove to be important when you're selecting your next superintendent. We can maybe find weaknesses as well as compliments and things that are going really well in a district and report back to the board. So I believe that is probably the most important part of the search, the environment from the community and our personnel.
Gustavos?
And knowing Eugene, it's just making sure that, uh, you know, Eugene's four distinct regions to me, you know, the Churchill, South Eugene, North Eugene, Sheldon area, they're very unique in their own perspectives and making sure that there's solid outreach to those areas and making sure that we seek the board's information in terms of who you want us to, to really work with and interview with. But also just to, uh, student voice is greatly important, especially students that have been traditionally marginalized, those furthest from educational justice. So how do we reach out to those students that typically have not had a voice? And how do we reach out to them? As, as Steve stated, you know, our, our metro group, our, our BSUs and so forth, our Pan Am groups, but also the community groups like Central America, Central Latino American or LULAC Group, uh, uh, those folks are N W A C P. I know you have a new N W A C P Executive Director, Miles Melton, who's a South Eugene grad, and making sure that we reach out to them and figure out who else we need to reach out to, to make sure that we have a collective voice of what the community really wants in their next leader in four J.
Thank you.
Great. Ready for question two. That's Martina.
Thank you. Um, so how might the stakeholder engagement process change under COVID pandemic conditions?
So I, I'll, uh, again, kind of go back to what I said earlier about the fact that I used to think that it was critical that we would have those only in-person meetings. And I thought that we were gonna lose some of that personal touch, that ability to listen to people. But what I found is that it actually has enhanced our ability to reach out to more people and in, in different ways, multiple ways. So it's ironic to think that in a pandemic, that the process was improved by the virtual meetings, the recordings and all. Uh, and, and you can have a hybrid approach. You can have, um, some in-person meetings and you can have some virtual meetings. But I think the fact that if you can, if you can capture that and, and have it so people can see it and view it at their leisure, then that has really improved the, the process. We get to hear more voices. We get to hear, touch more people. Um, it has really broadened the scope of the searches. So it's been a very positive thing, ironically.
I think the convenience, uh, that we've all, uh, grown to maybe appreciate or understand as a result of COVID enables more people to become involved. Um, they can, instead of having to drive to a meeting or, uh, they can, uh, sit in their own, uh, house and watch and engage uh, from their living room or dining room or wherever they, uh, do their Zooms.
Yeah.
Thank you, Janet. I'm sorry. I apologize for not seeing you wanting to.
Transparent, inclusive, thorough, and comprehensive program to help you work with you to make the best possible decision.
Thanks Doug. Gustavo?
Glad to see some familiar faces. I'm Gustavo that as superintendent of schools in the Edmund School District in Edmunds, Washington. A four-time superintendent, superintendent previously in California, in the Central Valley, as well as Orange County before becoming superintendent Eugene and now Edmund's School District. I have had the pleasure of working on at all levels of the school system, elementary, middle, and high school, as well as what I call both sides of the house, both the instructional side where had oversight of feeder group of schools, but also the admin services side, which is everything that supports instruction. As well as being in Oregon for 24 of my years, really familiar with the state dynamics. Sat was a superintendent representative on the State Board of Education, which is the most diverse board in the state of Oregon, really. Honored to be able to do that, also serving on the Oregon Department of Education on the multilingual learner team. As well as Costa's Equity Committee before I left the state, as well as serving on the O S A A executive team. So glad to be here and get honored to to represent McPherson Jacobson.
Thank you. My name is Steve Louder. I've been a superintendent for over 30 years and almost 40 years in education. So I feel like I'm really just still a teacher. Because it's about making a difference in the lives of children. That's what this is all about. That's why I do this. I don't need the money to do this. I I do this because it's a calling. It is why it's about making the communities, the schools better, making our democracy better, about helping schools choose the right leadership. I have a diverse history in the different kinds of schools, but my last district was in the middle of the Central Valley. Thirty-eight thousand, thirty-nine thousand kids, highly diverse, all poverty. Lots of gang activity, and it was about making a difference for those kids. That's what this was about. I didn't need to do that. In fact, it was a dangerous position. I had shootings outside my office once a month. And I did it because it was about making a difference in the lives of the children. They deserved a better education. And I wanted to put a few bricks in the wall to make that difference. That's why I do this, to try to make a difference in the lives of those children that are underserved, underrepresented, and they need a voice. And that's why we're here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your introductions. Good to see everyone. So I'm going to start off with Mary Walston. She has our first question.
Thank you and welcome to all of you and good to see certain people again. Anyway, based on your experience, please comment on some lessons you have learned about involving different stakeholder groups at different stages of the search process.
Well, let me start by saying that the stakeholder groups, first of all, you need to have all the stakeholder groups represented. You need to have a wide range of voices heard, all voices heard to the extent possible. And it's not just our average student body kids. It's our diversity of the student voice is extremely important. You you need to talk to the Metta Group, the Gay Straight Alliance kids, the B S U kids, the Pan Am group. You need to talk to the to the handicapped parents and students and talk to them about, you know, what their needs are and are we serving those needs? So they need to be involved in all stages of this, and in our process allows that to happen. I used to think that those in-person meetings were the key, that you had those personal relationships. But I found over the pandemic, and I've done five or six searches during the pandemic. And what I find is because we've done the virtually and recorded them, more people get a chance to weigh in on this. There there more of the voices get to be heard throughout the entire process. And that means gathering information from the community, the stakeholder, your four communities, the stakeholder groups in in the interviewing process, in the candidate forum process, where people get a chance to hear the candidates speak. But it's about recruiting the right fit. And and that whole process develops a picture of what that right fit is. And to us, that's critical. Anybody else want to want to chip in, other than the fact that we need to have that voice heard in all stages, including the interview stage? Doug, Gus, Janet?
Yes, if I could just add something here, I think that is probably the nuts and bolts of a search. We did a search and we hired McPherson and Jacobson when I was on the board. And that part proved to be the most important part because of the input that we can receive from all of the different stakeholders. We're talking community as well as internal employees and those of interest because we find out from our queries and from communicating and asking the questions and getting the feedback that we uncover things that that are important to these groups and will prove to be important when you're selecting your next superintendent. We can maybe find weaknesses as well as compliments and things that are going really well in a district and report back to the board. So I believe that is probably the most important part of the search, the environment from the community and our personnel.
And knowing Eugene, it's just making sure that, you know, Eugene's four distinct regions to me, you know, the Churchill, South Eugene, North Eugene, Sheldon area, they're very unique in their own perspectives and making sure that there's solid outreach to those areas and making sure that we seek the board's information in terms of who you want us to to really work with and interview with. But also just to, student voice is greatly important, especially students that have been traditionally marginalized, those furthest from educational justice. So how do we reach out to those students that typically have not had a voice? And how do we reach out to them? As as Steve stated, you know, our our Metta Group, our our BSUs and so forth, our Pan Am groups. But also the community groups like Central America, Central Latino American or LULAC Group. Those folks are NAACP. I know you have a new NAACP Executive Director, Miles Melton, who's a South Eugene grad, and making sure that we reach out to them and figure out who else we need to reach out to to make sure that we have a collective voice of what the community really wants in their next leader in four J.
Thank you.
Great. Ready for question two. That's Martina.
Thank you. So how might the stakeholder engagement process change under COVID pandemic conditions?
So I I'll again, kind of go back to what I said earlier about the fact that I used to think that it was critical that we would have those only in-person meetings, and I thought that we were going to lose some of that personal touch, that ability to listen to people. But what I found is that it actually has enhanced our ability to reach out to more people and in in different ways, multiple ways. So it's ironic to think that in a pandemic, that the process was improved by the virtual meetings, the recordings and all, and and you can have a hybrid approach. You can have some in-person meetings and you can have some virtual meetings. But I think the fact that if you can, if you can capture that and and have it so people can see it and view it at their leisure, then that has really improved the process. We get to hear more voices. We get to hear, touch more people. It has really broadened the scope of the searches. So it's been a very positive thing ironically.
I think the convenience that we've all grown to maybe appreciate or understand as a result of COVID enables more people to become involved. They can, instead of having to drive to a meeting or they can sit in their own house and watch and engage from their living room or dining room or wherever they do their Zooms.
Thank you. Okay, Maya, you have question three.
Hi.
Martina wanted to follow up maybe?
No, no, I just I saw Janet maybe trying to speak but on mute, and I wanted to make sure that we didn't like jump over that.
Thank you. I did. I did. And and I forgot to unmute, but I wanted to just quickly add the convenience after the stakeholders meeting of those persons who are unable to attend to be able to go back on your website and our website, pull that information up and participate because there will be an online survey very similar to the survey question, to the stakeholder questions that we will do by Zoom or in person.
Thank you, Janet. I'm sorry. I apologize for not seeing you wanting to speak up.
Me too. Sorry. Okay, now I think we're ready for Maya.
So what methods do you use to engage candidates who have historically been underrepresented in positions like superintendent? And can you share any data that demonstrates the effectiveness of these methods?
So great, great question. So we have 125 consultants across the country from all walks of life and all ethnic diverse backgrounds who are actively engaged in in each of these processes in that we send out a blast to them that says, hey, here's a job. Here's what people are looking for. Do you have any candidates that fit this profile? We have active members in ALAS, the Hispanic Administrators Association, the N A B C, the African American Association. We have actually the consultants are members in those groups, and so they are very helpful in helping to recruit minority and female candidates. The, so let's see, over the past five years, a third of our applicants have been female and almost a fourth of the applicants have been ethnically diverse. So in the past 10 years, and well, you know, it's to the district to hire who they want to hire. In the past 10 years, a third of the placements in the district we've worked with have been women or ethnically ethnically diverse candidates. But again, I think it goes back to, we actively recruit those individuals because they have been underrepresented in these processes. And it's not, it's 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 about fit. There are lots of people who can do the job, but it's about a fit that you're that we're looking for because our people stay, what's our people? They're not our people. They're they're your superintendent. But once you've selected that person, are those people stay? Over the past five years, eighty percent of the administrators are still in their positions. And let's see, over fifty percent of the administrators are still in their positions after 10 years. So so that fit is critical. And and we actively seek, in fact, I just finished Vancouver Public Schools. And they had their three finalists were an African American male, a Caucasian female, and a white male. But the white male fit the profile the best because as the NAACP people said, we don't really care about the color of the skin of the candidate. We want to know that that person can do the job. And in this particular case, all of those groups, the Hispanic community, the Native American community, the NAACP group said, this man not only gets it, but he can get it done. So for us, we try to provide you with the most diverse candidate pool we can, but it's really about the fit. It's about the individual and their skill set and their sensitivity to your needs.
And I think we should also add, we do the typical advertising with both, and it's in the proposal and under the investment advertising with both ALAS and NASB. So we do reach out in our advertising to those groups.
Director Rabasa, I'm President-elect for ALAS, the National Association for Latino Administrators. So we do really try and work to really push our candidates out to positions and get them ready. So we will do that, and we were working really closely with N A B C the last couple of years. And we'll continue to do that and try and promote more leaders of color that are needed across our country and love to get a leader of color in Eugene.
Thank you. I don't want to, I don't want to jump, jump ahead too fast. Make sure no one has another comment. Great. Okay, Laura. Hello. How do you develop a candidate profile?
Well, it's, so we don't develop a profile. What we do is we try to match the skill set, the qualities, the characteristics, the traits of the individual and the experiences of the individual applicants with your needs. So you develop a profile, you your your criteria develops the profile. We don't. So what we're looking for is those candidates, those individuals that meet the needs, the profile that you've developed in this process, the qualities, the characteristics, the traits, the experiences. So it's not really our profile. It is your profile, and it's our job to match the candidates with that profile. Doug, you want to, anybody else want to chip in?
I think we work with you to elicit your thoughts about about the kind of candidates you want to see. We, so working with you, we develop the initial profile, then working with stakeholder groups with it further develop those characteristics that would be important against which we would want to evaluate applicants and to, in order to determine whether or not they would be a fit based upon what you're looking for as a school board members, as well as what the community and the and the the various stakeholder groups have identified as important things, the characteristics that they want to see in the next leader in Eugene. So it's a really an iterative process, working with you and with the stakeholder groups to start to develop that picture of who the next superintendent could be and should be.
And I think we picked a team specifically to try to reach out to the different communities so that people feel comfortable sharing their thoughts and concerns. And so we can hear from all those different voices. We probably should have a student on our team, but we, they can't, usually can't do this. But it's important for us to hear those voices so that we can fit the profile that you have, you and the community, I should say, have created in that that will describe your next superintendent.
Great. Thank you. I get the next question. And this one is, can you tell us about a time when you successfully matched a candidate with a district that had a distinct candidate profile? What we're looking for is an example, maybe of a search one or more of you have been involved with where you were really looking, you know, what was distinctive about the profile? And how did you go go about making that fit or match?
Well, let me, let me go back and use Vancouver. Vancouver is extremely interested in diversity and equity. And that that was, that was one of their most important criteria for their candidates. So we were looking for people who were experienced, had that kind of knowledge, had that background, had successful experience. And as I said, we had three very successful sitting superintendents, very powerful individuals. And the one that came out was the white male, unfortunately, in some ways, but fortunately in that he had the right skill set in all of the communities. Now, he was also known to this community because he had worked here once before. But he was known to these constituent groups, and his work was known by all of those groups, the Native American group, the Hispanic group, the African American community. And so he was the unanimous choice. So it really wasn't so much about ethnicity. It was about skill set, but we gave them the opportunity to look at three highly competent qualified individuals. Doug or Gus or Janet, anybody want to comment?
I can add, on a search in Vicksburg, Mississippi, they were particularly looking for a leader. This is after all of the profile was set and all the stakeholder meetings were over. They were specifically looking for a superintendent who could relate to people, to a diverse group of people because the school system there, it had changed so much in terms of the diversity. But this person had to be people oriented because we under, we understood from the feedback we received that unless he was a people's person, he understood diversity and he understood people in general. The employees would not be happy. And to have content employees makes for happy students who are ready to learn.
Anybody else want to comment, Gus?
Just wait really quickly. It truly is about that, that they're right fit and working and having the right person that can bring the community together, especially the four J community, how the right person that can coalesce and bring the the community together and work with our association partners to ensure that we're heading in the right direction, carries a board's vision, and then sets forward a strong action plan to do that. But again, it all starts with making sure that they call us and they bring unity in that community. And and I think those are the the folks that I think people want to be able to come into a community such as four J and do that. Because it is, you know, it's 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 two hours south of Portland, so it's its own, it's the biggest community in that area. And people really view four J as the district as it is. It is the 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 district people want to be in. There's a district people want to be in, in that area. And how do we have the right person to come in to be able to lead the the district forward? And and create the best educational experience he can for not only kids, but the staff members as well. I think staff members are critical in terms of the the staff member voice, in terms of who they want in their next leader.
Thanks, Gus, for bringing that up. I know I I've overlooked the the voice of the employee groups, and they are critical to this process. They need to be involved in every step of this process as well, if this is going to be a successful search for four J. Thank you.
We ready to move to number six. That's Gordon.
Okay, we wanted to ask if you could provide us with a specific example of a time when you helped a board that had significant disagreements among its members to reach agreement and move forward? And tell us what was the point of conflict that you helped to resolve, and how did you go about resolving?
Well, interesting, Valdez Alaska comes to mind because they had two finalists who were extremely different. One was a continuous improvement consultant who had been a superintendent. And another was from a rural Alaska rural school district. And they wanted to to find the best fit. And what we we tried to do was to try to talk to them about what are those characteristics? What are those qualities? What what are the the political concerns you have between these two individuals? And I mean, the process is, it's a forced choice process. It always is. If you have five candidates, you give everybody three votes and they get to do their rank votes. They can vote all three on one individual, but then you start talking about the pluses and the minuses and how people will fit and how they're going to fit with the community and the board. In the end, it's about the connection to the board because the superintendent is your single employee. And and we have to talk about that a lot. We have to talk about, look, this is the person who you're going to have to trust to make the right decisions and to keep you informed on all the important things that are going on. So that 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 it's it's almost, it is a, it is a relationship issue. And to us, that's the most important thing. So the process really comes down to a lot of discussion, a lot of back and forth, a lot of advocating for an individual or talking about weaknesses of the individual, because there is no perfect fit. There never will be what you look for or who fits the profile or your needs the closest. Because every one of your candidates will have a weakness in an area that you would like to see as strength. So you try to find the people who are a best fit for you and who their weaknesses will be supported by your current staff. So it's a negotiation process, just like you negotiate with your employee groups. You could, you go back and forth until you come to an agreeable solution to the problem. In in rare cases, you can't come to the to the solution and you can go out and do the search again. But ninety-nine percent of the time, there will be a unanimous decision on a particular candidate. And in this case, they went, Valdez went with the the rural superintendent.
I think one of the other things, Steve and I are working on another search where given these COVID times, there are some issues around COVID. And sometimes as a consultant, issues around COVID in the community and and that have gone in into the board. And sometimes best thing for consultants to do is take a step back, let the board members work through those issues and us to provide information and help. But I think for us to try to resolve those issues is a fool's errand. And so some, and that's what we're doing right now, is letting the community and the other board members work through those issues as we move forward on the search.
I came from one of those boards. We had a five-four split prior to hiring McPherson and Jacobson. We had board members on each side of the fence. We couldn't ever agree on anything. However, we all had one thing in common. When it was time to find a superintendent, with the help of McPherson, I was the lead person who made all the contact before I met any of them. But there was one thing in common. We wanted the best superintendent possible for our students. So very disgruntled, but somehow, at that moment in time, and we could all agree on that one thing. Those splits and those minor disagreements are often set aside.
I'll just quickly add, I think it's a board, it's just, you know, finding the right fit for the broader community. I know that, again, every community is unique, and what's who's the best fit for the community that can, again, work with all the community partners? Because it's such a unique community with so many different partners, to ensure that they're doing the best, that they can carry out your vision for both students and staff. It's having the right fit. And I think people will 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 coalesce around those, those big objectives, who's best work for our community, the four J community, for our kids and for our staff that can carry your mission out, your vision.
Thanks, Gustavo. The, our track record shows that we provide candidates that that are the best fit for the community because those people say, and that is critical to the academic success of the students and the longevity of change in the community, moving the, moving the ball forward.
And I always think resolving conflict, you always have to keep in mind the overarching goal of what you're trying to achieve. As Gus said, it's really keeping in mind that we're trying to find the best person to provide quality leadership for quality education for the students.
We have our last question with Alicia.
Hey, is there anything you would like us to know that you have not already covered?
Gosh, how many hours do you have? I mean, we have about, we have about six or seven minutes, I suppose. So I'll let everybody sort of get a chance, but so I think I want to go back to the fact that this is about the kids. This is about all kids. It's not about those kids that are on student council, not about those kids that are, they're four O kids or, you know, the AP kids. It's about all kids, those kids who are not achieving, those underserved kids, those underserved populations, whether they be the Metta Group, the B S U groups, that it's about serving those children. And for us, that's why we do this. It's about serving all of the kids. It's about making sure that all employee voices are heard, that all community groups are heard, so that the individual who comes in that you hire comes in with this, with support from all of those groups, because that's what's going to make a successful superintendent. So I believe it's about a successful process, our proven proven track record, the fact that we will do whatever it takes to make sure you have the right fit, the right individual for four J.
To follow up on that, to make sure it's the right fit, we do not have a stable of candidates that will bring forward. We will, even though we have about a thousand people registered with McPherson and Jacobson, we will actively recruit people to meet that selection criteria. And we will really look to find that fit, as Steve has said. And and to make sure that we have people who we think will meet the unique requirements and the uniqueness of the Eugene community. And I think, as Steve said, our track record speaks for itself and providing candidates that are, that once they're in the position, tend to remain, and that stability is so critical for moving a school district forward.
From my seat, I, you know, I have a little skin in the game, being the former superintendent of four J in terms of bringing the best person to the job possible. And knowing that a good superintendent is an equalizer for the community. It truly is, using a strong equity lens in terms of what the needs are for all kids, in all means all. And having a person with a passion and commitment to move the system forward, continue to move to move the system forward, continue to move the system forward, again, using the vision of the board. The board creates a vision that the superintendent then enacts. But knowing that community and knowing how sometimes the community is fractured by the different silos that, uh, that because of location, geographical location, how do we bring a person that can bring people together? Their common vision to move the system forward. Again, I, um, again, as, as Steve and Doug and Jenna have stated, is a great superintendent coming in is a great equalizer for the community and a great, uh, again, and is the champion for the education, is a face of the community, but is also, again, um, working with the board, sets direction for the system. And again, it's just something that I look forward to possibly working on this with the, the 4G board.
I think Alicia asked, is it something that we've not shared with the board tonight? Uh, what I'd like to say to 4G is if we were fortunate enough to do the work for you, that you would not have any regrets and that you would have the most hardworking team ever. I'd like to share that with you.
Well said, Jenna. Thank you very much for capsulizing, encapsulating that for us. Absolutely. This is a mission-driven team. This, we believe our team is, it will be a good fit for you, but the board has to make a choice because frankly, all the firms that you have interviewed can do the job. And it's about the fit and we believe we have the connections nationally um, to the different groups. Uh, we will actively recruit for you. Uh, like I said, we have 125 consultants across the, the country who will be looking for the right fit for 4G. Uh, we would love to be able to work with you, with you in this process. Uh, thank you for your time tonight. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time. It was really a pleasure to interview you and, um, we, as you know, have interviewed three firms and we're going to spend a little time debriefing, um, after, after, in about 10 minutes or so. And, uh, then at our next board meeting, which is November 3rd, we'll be voting on which firm we'll be using.
Thank you very much for your, your time and the opportunity to speak with you tonight. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Good evening.
Okay. So it looks like we have another short break. And then we'll come back and Karen will help us go through a, an initial process. So, um, if we're ending a little bit early, uh, but I think we'll just keep to the coming back at eight 20 schedule. Okay. See you all there. We're at nine 20. So, I mean, eight 20. We have a few people. There we go, Gordon. And all right. I think we're all here. So Karen, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Sure. I know, um, I'm, I'm good. I'm unmuted. Um, I know that the directions say that Judy's going to ask this, but, um, I think the first, oh, uh, Mary's got her hand raised before we start. Mary, did you want to?
I, I do have a process question. We're deliberating a little bit tonight, but we're going to make a decision next week. So my question is, will be we using the Equity Lens tool that we adopted last week? Um, because this is going to guide me as we go through the deliberations and as I make my, uh, this, this decision next week. Thank you.
If, if that question is for me, I'm not sure I'm the right person to answer that. That seems like, um, that is a question that you all maybe have discussed, um, outside of this setting.
I would just like some clarification on what I should be using to guide my thinking.
Um, Judy, I don't, do you want to tackle that one or do you want me to try?
I, I will do my best. Um, I think that it's important that people at the board, as they're thinking about these things, are using an equity tool. There were a couple in the packet that we looked at. We did talk about one, but I don't think we've had any training or applied it in any way and have some questions about how to do that. So, um, my thought is that we should be, the, the, the questions, again, if you look at the two tools in the packet, probably they should be, we should be thinking of those as we look at each firm. And, uh, we could be asking them of each other during the discussion. That's the best way I could answer it because we don't really have any.
Thank you. Thank you. That helps.
Laurel.
Hi, uh, I just wanted to say as far as equity lens tools, that they're tools. So if we decide to, as a board, to use one for this, that would be great. And I, I appreciate the question, Mary. Um, I, I would love to use that because I think that is equity is foundational. Meaning it's the foundation of, should be the foundation of our work, not something we go and turn towards sometimes. It should be just underlying everything. So I really appreciate the question. And I think it should be something that we agree on as we go forth. And I appreciate this coming up right at the beginning and I process, good process question. Thank you.
Okay. So Judy, good answer then. Um, so the, the directions for the first step, um, are in a hopes of maybe eliminating, uh, one of the firms and sometimes that happens with candidates and sometimes it doesn't. So, um, in terms of your forced ranking, here's where I'm going to ask if, uh, and I'm going to ask everybody to share their bottom, their, sorry, their third ranked, um, firm. So, uh, the direction share that if four or more of you have the same bottom, then we'll see if anyone has them as the top and we'll kind of sort that out. But, um, and I'm going to use the fabulous alphabetical order that you ask questions in. Um, so Mary, would you, uh, and I'm not, I'm just tallying. I'm not writing whose bottom choice. But Mary, would you be willing to share who your, oh, Alicia's got a question.
Okay. It's probably in writing somewhere, but are we in executive session now? Are we in public session? I'm, uh, you know, we talked earlier about I'm, you know, we talked earlier about not putting one forward, you know, like kind of doing it simultaneously so that it's not influencing. I don't know if people still think that or not, but anyway.
I appreciate that, Alicia. That was not shared with me, and I'm, and I'm.
It probably wasn't shared with you, because we didn't really talk about it. We talked about it with other things. And I thought I heard somebody talking about it at the beginning of this meeting. So that's, that's just my question.
Alicia, Martina, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think that our discussion last week on Wednesday, we talked about for the final vote that we would want to do that. I see no reason why we shouldn't do the same thing here. So these are not votes, but like straw poll tallies. I see no reason why we shouldn't do the same. But I think, Karen, that's probably why that wasn't an explicit, you know, that wasn't something that you would have had any reason to expect or plan for. So please don't feel like you're, you know, wrong footed coming right into this.
That's, that's okay. So then maybe what I should do is I will name one of the organizations, and you can raise your hand and share if that is your third ranked. How does that feel? Does that feel better instead of going around the room? All right, so the first group, and Carrie, you chimed in. Did you want to say something, or did that feel like a right strategy?
That's one strategy. An alternate strategy would be to have each individual board member send a direct chat to Karen or to me. And then we'll read them back when they're done. So it's, it's again, like balloting, but in the Zoom environment. So that again, we aren't having people feeling influenced in their choices by what they're seeing from others in that initial, in that initial response.
So Karen, when I look in the chat, we can only send it to the host and all the panelists or to everyone.
So I don't think I'm one of your choices. So I think we'll have to go with my suggestion is I'll name a firm, and then you can raise your hand if you have them ranked as your third priority. So the first firm that you met tonight was Hazard, Young, and Atia. And if you would raise your hand if they were ranked third for you. Okay, thank you. The next one that you met was Alma Advisory Group. If you would raise your hand if they were ranked third for you. And finally, McPherson Jacobson, if anyone, thank you. So I could have probably stopped after the first one, because it had four votes. It's just late in my math and process isn't as sharp as it should have been. So Hazard, Young, and Atia had four board members who believed that they ranked third for them. So then the follow-up question is, did anyone, and raise your hand if it is, if that's you, if anyone had Hazard, Young, and Atia as number one. All right, so according to the outline that you all had in your hand, we will not need to process and have a further conversation on Hazard, Young, and Atia. So we'll focus the rest of our conversation tonight on Alma Advisory Group and McPherson Jacobson. So thank you very much for that first part. And now it's time for you to get to talk about what you heard and what you liked. And we're going to do it in the order that you met them. So Alma Advisory Group will be the first group that each board member will have a minute to discuss. And really, it's just share your thoughts, what you, what you liked, what wonderings you might have, what follow-ups might be helpful to learn about in reference checks. But this is a chance for you to share what you reflected upon after hearing their responses to your questions. And just to mix things up and keep us on our toes, we're going to go opposite alphabetical process. So Alicia, I'm going to put you on the spot first, if you would, if that's okay, anyway. Alicia, would you be willing to talk first about Alma, and then we'll go to Gordon, and then Judy, and then.
I'm going to go ahead and pass. Thank you.
Okay, Gordon, would you be willing to jump in?
Yeah, sure. For me, Alma was head and shoulders above the other two. Listening to the interviews, I remembered how hard it is to get really concrete answers from, like how easy it is for any kind of interview to be kind of asked standard questions, and you get bad answers, and you don't learn that much. And I thought they gave, they gave serious, concrete, original answers that also seemed like things I hadn't heard before about ways to engage the community in particular. So that's, that was my basic reaction.
Thank you. I do have a timer set, but just to try to keep us on, if anyone goes a little over or a little under, no concerns. Judy, you're, you're next in the lineup.
Okay, I too found their interview really refreshing. It was just a little bit different approach. And I specifically liked them mentioning the anti-bias training. I was, that's something I want our board to be doing before we actually start interviewing. So that was great. Talked about the native language, you know, the ability to engage stakeholders with native language. I actually felt like they could probably, maybe they could engage stakeholders that we don't typically engage with easily. And they stress skills and competence, which another group did too, but I think that's really important when you're doing a a profile. Some of my wonderings were, I think they've only done one superintendent search. And I read, I was reading through, one of the, the second might be for the charter school. So that concerned me. And they said they'd have, they don't really have any West Coast, well, they have maybe one person from California, but I just don't know how familiar they are with this area. And they said they'd have to look at how you, you know, what the market, marketing would be like in this area. So I just wondered about their experience or ability to really recruit superintendent level people, just, and they don't have a long track record. So those are my wonderings.
Thank you. Laurel.
Hi, Karen.
Good evening.
I really like Alma. I liked, I thought they were just a fresh air. I have tons of notes, and I use different colors too. So you know. I, some of, they had concrete answers. They, in, in the other interviews, it sounds like they were most of the time repeating our, our questions to us in a different way. And they had concrete answers. Their data was good when they, we asked for data, and they're like, yeah, this is our data. This is how many people we've placed. So I'm not sure it's accurate that they've only placed one person. But also, they're really good at going out after and out of the box and getting maybe those people that other people pass over, because they're used to doing it a very certain way. And that excited me. Because the box does not serve a lot of people well. They, making a point to mention how they have interviews in native language is wonderful. Shows that they see things that the other interviewers didn't see. And this is, what we're doing is comparison. A fierce commitment to engaging stakeholders, and they mentioned it several times, everybody mentioned stakeholders, but they talked about it differently. They talked about doing it in an authentic way. They talked about finding who was excluded, which is also one of the questions in the Equity Lens, who's excluded from the conversation. They get the word out early. Nobody had mentioned that, seeing how you miss people if your timelines are narrow. They, they talked about that. They talked about smaller conversations, which other ones had talked about, we can talk to everybody at the same time. So why am I getting to a stop saying, Mary just told me to stop?
No, I just said time. I was just asking about time.
Yeah, at this first round, Laurel, for each person, each group, just the guidelines is a minute. That, that's okay.
I think Alicia's.
Thank you, Laurel. Maya, you are next.
I was also pleasantly surprised by this, this session. I appreciated a lot of the things that have been set up, said already, but I want to focus on a few of the things that they, that the, the words that they said or the sentences that really stood out to me. So in the question that I was assigned to, which I appreciate all the questions, but I was really excited to get that one. When they said every step is designed to mitigate bias, that really, really, like, held a lot of compelling feelings for me. I also thought that it was really interesting, and I feel like I learned something in this process when they responded to our question about how do you develop a candidate profile, when they were like, yeah, no, we don't use the word profile. And it really slid me down, and I was, you know, so in an interview process to learn about more than just the interviewees, I think that's, that's kind of a standout moment for me as well. I think that the Denver example is really an interesting one, even if we came back to it a lot, because it felt like, despite the fact that it's a 90,000 student district, there were some interesting overlaps with our district that I think make for their experience there to be something that I'm really interested in thinking about for our community. I liked that they had like a four-step answer to the how do you deal with boards that have disagreements? And it was really tangible, and it wasn't abstract. And it was like, first we do this, then we do this. And it, and it didn't, it didn't avoid the question and answer basically a process that seems like it's the normal process that we should go by anyway. And I really, really appreciated that the first step is one that seems the most important whenever there's a difference of opinion or perspective, which is understand and identify common ground. It feels like they, they were focusing on, you know, finding a place for us to land on together before we get to a place where we feel apart. And I, I thought that was, that was really important. I could honestly, I felt like I took a lot more notes on this one, because I was just really energized listening to them talk. And like Laurel, at the end, when I heard that they had at least one person who could deliver sessions and facilitate sessions, not by hiring somebody out, but, but as the, the member of the committee in their native language, which, which is shared by, I think, what, we're at 17%, if not growing, every single day with the, with the Spanish language speakers. And I see Mary telling me my time is up.
Thank you. I appreciate the help, Mary. I, it's a little awkward for me to, to cut in. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
I just want us to make sure we all have a chance to talk.
Martina, you are next.
Thank you. So yes, like some others, Alma is far and away my top choice. I also, you know, take specific quotes. That's the note-taking process I have. And Maya and I seem to have written down many of the same quotes, so it's definitely stood up to me. And for me, the thing that really speaks to what I'm so excited about, about the approach that they described, is that they build their process to acknowledge, address, and mitigate bias. And they said specifically, one of the quotes that stood out to me so much was we value process more than the recruitment, which says to me that what they are working to do is design, to design a process so that we are genuinely looking to assess people based on their skillset and based on what they can demonstrate to us, instead of based on how well they are able to conform themselves to our expectations, or biased expectations of what superintendent can or should look like. And I think the term fit being critiqued is really important, because while I don't think it's intentional by many people, it is often sort of a code word for people like us. And, and that's, that's really troubling. And again, I don't, I don't ascribe ill intent to anybody using that term. But when I heard them say, hey, we want to be really careful about that, I heard them describing a process that is self-critical and that is really introspective. And for me, when I look at, you know, the Equity Lens and what it's asking, I think it's asking us to do similar things in terms of like really getting to a process that is, that is trying to acknowledge and be clear-minded about the biases that we are going to bring into this.
Thank you. Mary, you are next.
Certainly. I found that the Alma group was a breath of fresh air. I appreciated their enthusiasm. And I, thought all three of them were very personable. My wonderings were their experience. They've only been in business five years, but I realize they have other work they've done. But they've only done, as I read this in their response, one superintendent search, and that was in, in Denver. They did a CEO for a charter school, but only had 1,600 students. They seem to have a lot of experience with human resources. Great. They do a lot of recruitment for cabinet-level positions, HR, finance. That's great. But I see, my, my problem with them, or my, my wondering is their ability to find a superintendent in this environment. And I believe, I wonder about their ability to cover, from what I can tell, they have five people that they're working with. And the woman who said she's on the West Coast is actually in Denver, from what I can read. I just have concerns about their capacity. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, Alicia, I want to make sure we can circle back to you. You good? Okay, sorry, that was my phone chiming. So according to the process, now what we're going to do is we're going to go on to McPherson and Jacobson, and the same thing. Everybody has a minute to share their wonderings. After we talk about them, then there'll be that open dialogue where everyone can kind of compare and contrast the two organizations that we're talking about. So for this next round, really trying to stick with conversations directly related to McPherson and Jacobson. And Alicia, are you open to starting, or, okay, okay, Gordon?
Um, well, I don't, I guess I said I was ready to start, and now I like have, trying to figure out what to say. You know, there were, I guess it seems, you know, kind of what I expected. I didn't feel like I learned a lot new from the, their firm that's been around. That's been around for a long time, that has a, the kind of questions about, do they have capacity, they have reach. There's no question about that with this firm, but I, I I didn't find anything. I didn't find anything that I saw in writing. And my one wondering is about the, whether the role of Superintendent Baldarris, who I think would be terrific on any search firm, but I have a wondering about the way that might play with relationships here in 4G.
Thank you. Next is Judy.
Great. I haven't gotten to think this through thoroughly either, but I do. Some of the strengths, I think, are there really deep, deep contexts in many, many communities. And I mean, across the United States, but also, you know, they have members and leaders in in professional and other communities of color associated with, with people in schools. The, the consultants had the perspective of both superintendent, having been in the, in that kind of position, but also board positions. And I really liked that aspect on their team. I think they had, have experience in Oregon, and I think that is helpful in this region. Not that we necessarily want to hire someone from Oregon, but the experience is helpful. And I liked that when they talked about developing the profile, that it was really the community, the boards and community profiles. It wasn't them developing it. They were listening as us developing it. And I just liked the way they phrased that. And to wonderings, I think that to Gordon's point, I think we should talk about, I mean, I think having Gustavo Baldarris part of the team is a plus and could also be, you know, perceived, I think it's something we should definitely have a conversation about as a board. And I think that's mostly, at this point, I'd want to be sure, I assume that, you know, I guess this would be true of all of them, the people that they brought to the interview, are the people that will be actually working with us. And that was, you know, I'd want to be clear about that as well.
Thank you, Judy. Laurel.
I, um, I was not impressed by them. They, they said basically the same as the first candidate, HWA, many ways, repeating our questions to us and regurgitating in a different way. There were, when asked about equity, their answers were extremely problematic. They said those people more than once. They said the NCAA people, more than once. There was just several instances where it's like othering people. othering people that don't look like them. So it's obviously not integral to what they do. Equity is not integral or foundational to what they do, else they wouldn't know how to talk about it. I, I was, I was really offended by a lot of their responses. I think they, that, um, I think they were calculating and bringing Gustavo and, um, I really enjoyed her, um, I can't remember her name. Is it Janet? The, uh, the, she, I, I thought, um, that was calculating rather than something that they really have voice in their company, but I can't prove that. I can just say that's my feelings around that. And I was not comfortable with how they portrayed themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Maya.
It was already unmuted. Um, yeah, I, I want to echo the, um, the possible conflict of interest with Gustavo, um, while I also want to acknowledge that, um, he clearly has a window into 4J that others would not have. I, I find it, it's, it's an important conversation that I think we, we definitely need to dive deeper into. I also was surprised and added to the wanderings concerns, a possible conflict of interest with the, um, I only put his first, oh no, Douglas Nelson, who referenced working with the U of O and the admin program, just because there's such a close working relationship between the U of O and 4J. And I just, it just came into my mind that that was something to note. Um, I was, uh, disappointed about the example being brought up over and over again about Vancouver. I, I don't know the details of it, but it felt, um, it, it made me, it made me kind of step back and, and have a few equity concerns that came up. Just, um, it, it felt a little, I wanted to, I wanted to learn more about that. I'll leave it at that. I did note in terms of the strengths that they clearly have a lot of experience and, um, their network of consultants is probably incomparable. So that's definitely worth noting. Um, I appreciated the data that they shared and that they have members, the consultants are part of these organizations. And that means that they have a reach in terms of, um, extending, um, our, our job search into areas, um, that include both black and Latino administrators. And that was, that was, um, helpful. But I, um, I thought that their answer to our question about what to do about disagreements was a little disappointing. It was kind of like, well, we'll step back and let you guys add it. And I'm not sure that that's, um, that's, that's where we are with such a big, huge decision. I think, um, I'd like a little bit more of a concrete answer to how that, how that happens with them in the past and potentially with us.
Thank you. Um, Martina.
Thank you. Uh, well, I think that the concerns that I have have in a lot of ways already been aired and the, the, the things that I think are strengths have already been aired as well. So I don't want to just like repeat. I will say that I, there, there were a number of moments during the discussion when the language that was used really did trouble me, um, because it indicates to me, um, by virtue of using that kind of language, that, perhaps there is some deeper work that needs to happen within that organization to interrogate the ways that bias shows up. And if, if I am seeing that biased language from them, then I, I'm just not confident in their ability to recognize and interrupt it in the recruitment process. And, and that to me is what's most concerning. Um, again, not to ascribe ill intent, because I think sometimes people aren't, don't notice when those things are coming up and they, they may very well believe that they are, um, you know, engaging really consciously in equity work. I heard them describing, um, you know, the statistics that they have and the relationships that they have. Um, and so I see that they are doing the sort of surface level work and I, I do think that that's important. But I, I did not feel confident that that deeper work was there. And I think that that's the piece that we are going to need the most, uh, the most clarity about.
Thank you. Mary.
Well, uh, the strengths that I saw is they were the only ones, as I recall, who talked about kids or students, you know, which is why, why we're all here. I think the other strength was their, the depth of the bench, uh, their reach nationally. They have, you know, people in probably 30 different states. I was looking through it. I appreciated the remark about the, the profile that, you know, we write it and they find people that match it. They don't develop that. So again, it's in our hands and we can accept or reject people that they've referred to us. There were a couple, uh, words that, that were used by Stephen that kind of bothered me. He said the word handicap, which is, that, that bothered me. And then I, yeah, they are kind of the, I would say, um, I don't want to say run of the mill, but it's, it's pretty standard process. But we're buying, we're, we're, we're going to buy a superintendent. We're not buying a firm that we need to fix. Thanks.
All right. Um, the, the next portion of your conversation is where you get to do the comparing and contrasting. And this is where you can, you can talk about a specific statement and compare the two firms. Since we are talking about two, the goal is to winow down to one or two. So it might be at the end of the 15 minutes, um, the Judy and Martina realize that they're going to be checking references on two. But it might also be really beneficial at the end of the 15 minutes to just do a check in and see if there is a, consensus around number one and number two, um, to see if, if there's just reference checks on one. Martina.
Um, I, I just, I, I wanted to just jump in quickly, um, as we were starting this conversation. Mary, I appreciated you bringing up the point about kids. And I, um, like I said, I, I do direct quotes because that's the way that I can reflect best. And I will say that I have quotes from all three groups that reference kids and students extensively. No, and totally understandable. And that's why I wanted to bring it up and to go back to the quotes, um, because it's, it's easy sometimes to not catch those. And I had to go and look myself to double check. And I do see those quotes from all three.
Thank you. I, I just didn't hear that.
So, no, totally understandable.
So again, to be very transparent, I am operating without maybe all the details. I don't know, uh, Judy, if you had plans about going around the table and, or is this just more of a popcorn kind of conversation now where this 15 minutes, um, people can share. I want to make sure everybody has the opportunity to speak. So we can certainly, again, go around the horn if you want, um, or we can let it be kind of a free flowing. I, I would like to take your lead on how you want to do that.
Okay. I did, hadn't really thought about it because I thought you were doing the process, but I think I would say, I would like it to be, why don't we open it up if someone has, um, more comments to add? But then make sure that everyone gets a chance to add a comment before someone speaks a second time.
I will share that's generally how we do it. I just realized that there was a portion of the fine tuning I didn't know from before, so I wanted to just check in. So I've got a timer set for 15 minutes and this will be a, a free flowing conversation and, um, I will step back. Alicia, did you have a question?
Yeah, I, um, actually just have a suggestion. Um, I'm wondering, I know it's hard work to get references on two, but I'm wondering if we can spend our time instead of just a free flowing conversation, putting forward that we're actually going to go get references on two. I think it's helpful. What if after this interview, our top choice says they don't want to work with us? And I don't want to lose any more time. I'm not saying they won't go out with us and take us. But what I would, was wondering if you guys are okay with it, is that we say we're going to go out on two and what are the questions? What are the areas of focus, um, that we would want, uh, to ask? Because I've already heard some like, I really want to dive, dive deeper about what other kind of searches did we miss? Have they done, um, the one group? Gosh, can't believe I can't remember names, but, um, have they done other searches? I heard that as a concern. I heard, um, you know, do they have enough time? What are the questions that we would ask about the other firm? Anyway, there's my, I think I might've spent a minute on that, but I will stop now. Just a thought.
I will share as budding in, and I apologize, um, that has happened a number of times that we start with one and something materializes in the reference check, that then we realize, gosh, it would have been nice if we had moved forward to. So, um, I, I just say that is a lot of experience that you, you really don't know what you're going to learn in a reference check and if it's going to align with what your values are and what you're looking for. So, um,
I really agree. I fully expected that we would be checking references on two at least. So I think that makes the most sense. I, I, because I think also stepping back from the interview process, sometimes things, you know, filter in differently. And I like to reflect on my notes. So I'd rather, I'd rather just keep, get, get references on both. So I think Alicia's question, unless someone has something burning to add to the discussion tonight that they didn't, uh, is a really good one about maybe we should take each firm one at a time and what would be the reference? If we're, if we're going to be talking to people who they've worked with, what would be the questions we'd want answered?
Mary, and then Laurel.
Well, I just, again, say, I, I, if we narrow down to one, we've essentially made a decision. And so I just feel uncomfortable doing that tonight. I would like to keep it at two and have the chance to do a, a more focused, uh, set of reference checks. Again, not having clarity around what tool that I'm going to use, uh, for the equity considerations. I really don't want to move to just one firm tonight. Thanks.
Laurel.
I, I agree. It shouldn't be one firm, but I do not, um, I do not agree it should, based on that interview, that the second one should be McPherson or the other one. So, um, I don't know if we can have another person to interview, which, but I, I do, I do think it's very smart to have more than one choice. Yeah, that's not how you do interviews. You don't say, I've already picked it and now we're going to keep going. So, but I also was not impressed by the two others. They, uh, they were just, Alma was just light years ahead of them. Also to the, to the question of this is our time to talk about, um, what we liked and what we didn't. And I really want to keep that happening and not just restrict it to, to, to one certain process, but to like, I'm interested in understanding more about why for some people that it's really important to have, uh, them do this a lot, or why having knowledge of Oregon is important to them. So I feel like that is our time for this. Um, and I don't want to really restrict that too much. If we have more time at another time, then I'm more than willing to restrict it. But as far as I understood, this is it.
Gordon.
Thanks. I just wanted to, uh, to, to talk about the things we might ask if we're, or the, the things we might try to find out about the firms. I think the capacity question and reach question about Alma is a question that I also had, when, certainly had when I first read their materials. For me, one of the, um, one of the things that I was most concerned about was if you, was usually the kind of public engagement that's required for superintendent search, I think is different than is required for, for any level of leadership that is lower. You know, for an HR director or something, you don't do like a big, huge community thing. And I wonder what would be their capacity to do that kind of community engagement? Then when they talked to us tonight, I thought their, what they said about community engagement was much stronger than anybody else. So I didn't, I was kind of pleasantly surprised and didn't end up having that concern, but I do think it makes sense. You know, it would make sense to, to verify that. The concerns about, um, McPherson, I think other people have articulated better than me as, as what, what it is that we would want to check out. Um, and I do, I guess, I guess the one other thing I just wanted to say is about the equity tool. As far as I remember, we voted on an equity tool, like the big Lane County equity tool. And we're, we haven't talked about how to implement it or how to, we haven't done training or any of that, but that we're no longer deliberating between multiple tools. But I, we don't have this conversation again, if that's not true. I thought that's what we voted on last time.
Maya, thank you.
I just want to lower my hand first and then, um, express my appreciation for, um, Alicia's suggestion to enter, to follow up on the, um, references for both organizations. It just seems wise and not, um, like it'll set us back. We already went, you know, we already, um, shifted the timeline once to be able to extend outreach to the organizations or the firms that had been left out. And I, um, whatever we can do to kind of pick up and catch up on that timeframe, I think is, um, really, really thoughtful. And I, I really appreciate that. I, um, one thing I noticed in our, uh, process is we had mentioned that we were going to, communicate to the three firms that we needed to make sure that if they were intending to come on site, that they needed to be vaccinated. And I noticed that that was left out. So I would like that to be brought in if that's possible. And I see Martina's going to respond to that. So that's great. That was, oh, and Lisa, and I see Carrie popping up. So it sounds like a conversation happened that I did not know happened. So I'm curious to hear about that. Um,
Lisa, you probably know better than I, if you want to answer that question, I can unmute.
And just my last part that I was going to say, Gordon kind of took the words out of my mouth. I, um, I, I also thought that we had made a pretty, um, formal decision, um, whether we revisit that or not is still, you know, that's, that's a different conversation, but it, I didn't, I didn't realize that it was not a formalized decision that we made. So, um, I'm just kind of confused why, why we would suggest that people use whatever tool they want, but.
Lisa, do you want to jump in and answer the question?
Yeah. In the email, can you hear me? In the email that I sent to each candidate, each firm, the closing paragraph said, "The contract development process with the selected firm will include the provision that all 4J contractors, as well as employees and volunteers, must be fully vaccinated or have a valid approved exception in order to work on campus." So that was our approved communication to each firm.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I know, um, Holly had expressed concern about that in our subcommittee meeting. And, um, I just wanted to honor that mentioning on her part.
So I have, um, capacity, um, and reach as one question that we want to ask as a follow-up about Alma. How about some other questions? What would people want to know about McPherson and Jacobson? Martina.
So I think a question I would like to ask, maybe another sort of meta question is for reference checks, do we want to be asking? Do we want to be selecting a set of questions that we're going to ask of both? Or are we wanting to ask different questions to each firm? I think there's some positives and negatives to both, but, um, one of the sort of principles that I've typically operated on is that if we're doing, um, something that is like specialized, just to one and maybe not the other, then we might be introducing bias there because we're asking targeted questions in one direction and not. And, and that may open up people, may change the way people are answering things. So just want to throw that out there.
I don't know how Karen would answer with 4J, but when we do reference checks, we can individualize because there's different things we want to know about each group. So I don't think that's a problem, but Karen.
I, I think generally, uh, my practice is, uh, and what we coach our administrators is that you might go in with some general questions that are asked of it. All references, um, but often in this kind of debrief, there is something very specific that is a wondering that you might address specifically with regards to that. So they don't all need to be the same. I do think there's some real, um, solid foundation to having some be the same questions that you're asking of both. And then the wanderings, if that helps, uh, you and Judy as you move forward. I see Laurel's hand was up and then Maya's.
Yeah. My question is, is the, um, committee that was doing this work dissolved now? Or is this something that can be worked on in the committee? And if that's like too much to ask, then I apologize. But it seems like this is work that could, we could send information to like we did before, like what we were interested in, that it could happen that way.
Martina, did you want to respond to that?
Yeah. And Judy, maybe jump in if, if you feel like you have, um, a clear answer than me. I think, um, one of the, one of the issues around, um, who's going to do the reference checks and where we're going to work that out is time. Because if our meeting is a week from today, we need to get, um, we need to, we need to get all of, all of the questions answered pretty soon. Um, you know, a We need to, we need to get all of all of the questions answered pretty soon, you know, again, because we're not going to send an email with the results because that's protected. We, you know, we don't have to worry about sending it out in the in the packet, but we want to make sure that we can ask those questions. Promptly and and there may be issues with getting people on the phone, and so I think if we had to have a subcommittee meeting that was noticed and then they had to work out the questions and then they had to figure out when to ask them. We're running into the problem of of the clock. And Judy, is that did I, do you think I got?
I think that's what we decided that and I think it actually also broadens how many people get involved as well at this level, so. My Maya?
I if I understood correctly what Karen you were saying, I I appreciate like a hybrid approach to this, like some set questions for everyone, but. I know that it was a little bit frustrating to not be able to ask follow ups because of the need for them to be fair, and so it feels like this is our opportunity to do so, although it's with. References and not the original source, so that's a little tricky, but I would support. A a hybrid model of that, so like a standard set of questions and I would love to hear what they are before they're delivered if that's possible, but I'm super not attached to that. It's just, I I'm curious to see the process and to know how you guys jump into it.
So Mike, can I just say one thing, that's what we're asking now, what do you want us to ask, so I mean. I'm happy to come out then once we actually write them down, but we really would like your thoughts about things you'd want to have follow up on specifically.
I I understand, I was just speaking more to that process question that Martina brought up.
So anything in particular we'd want to know about McPherson and Jacobson, it seemed like some of the concerns were their. Understanding a depth of equity work or. Either what would be a good question or questions we could ask about some of the people they've worked with, maybe to get at that.
Laurel?
Well, I guess I'm interested in. I'm trying to think because they're going to be adept at answering the question. Kind of in that roundabout way, but I would like to know exactly what kind of. Equity training and work they've had and how they apply it in their work, I mean, the question was asked and they managed. To really butcher it, it really wasn't a good answer. And so I guess if we're going if we're going forward with them to ask that.
So you know, so Laurel, so that's an excellent suggestion, so since we're going to be asking references, why don't we ask them? How did this firm address or include equity in in the processes they use, then we hear it from someone they worked with. In a different way, what their experience was. Would that work as one?
Yeah, and. Yeah, and I guess maybe another question be why, why? Why do they feel it's important that they've worked in Oregon before, why would that be different than working somewhere else? I if somebody has a better way to say that, because I'm trying to approach it in a way that is. I don't think I need somebody that knows just Oregon, because Oregon is pretty. You know, white.
May maybe because again, we're we're not, since we're not asking them, I I think you're right that the struggle to try to figure out how to get the answers is challenging, right? But if we're asking a reference, so an organization that they've worked with, could we maybe ask something like? In what ways did their experience with Oregon benefit? The you know, your experience with them or how did you see that as positive, did you see that showing up? As a positive, just something that's trying to get at how that how that organization experienced their. Their knowledge of the state, do you feel like that would? Get at it?
Yeah, I'm trying to find their their references on the myriad pieces of paper I have.
Well, what I would do, they have all the most recent searches and I think what we'll do is pick. The most recent searches in the area, you know, or or closer in size to our district, something that would be comparable, but. Let me just try to say, because Laurel was me and I think someone else brought that up as a plus, so maybe I could just tell you what I was thinking, why I think it's important. And it may or may, I'm just saying that that came out, I think in the past, this district and other districts have sometimes. There really are in terms of leadership, how school districts are run, etc, very differences regionally. And people come in with one set of minds, a different mindset, and it just, it's important, I think, to understand. The kind of way we do business here, I mean, a lot of places, for example, in the East Coast are a lot more authoritative, top down. And as opposed to, and that's very, I'm just using big generalizations, but I was just said, I've heard that before and I've seen it fail sometimes without. Doesn't mean it's always going to fail, that's all. So that was, that was why I said it, if that's helpful at all to you.
Yeah, that that, I mean, yeah, it's, yep.
Mary, you were next with your hand?
Yes, thank you, and just quickly to Judy's point, you know, in both in Chicago and New York City. Those the superintendent of of the schools is the mayor, so it's a different political system, so I think. We do things a little bit different in the in the West on the West Coast, but my concern was, and one of the questions I would hope you would ask the references, is this conflict of interest question? I I don't think that. You know, it's a bad thing to have people that know how the district works and like, as I said earlier, we don't have to take the candidates they refer. And I think with all due respect to everybody on that panel, the four of them, that having, you know. Persons of color and and is really important, especially the woman from Louisiana, I mean, I think she really understands and she'd be a powerful voice. And that would would be one thing I would hope you would ask the reference, you know, checks is is what what kind of candidates were were presented to you. And you know, in in many ways, it's a small universe of people looking for superintendent job, so there's always going to be people that know people that know people. You know, I I know who Doug Nelson is because of OSBA, and so I I don't know, I just think that. That it's not a conflict if Gustav was involved in the search and we can always say that, but you can you can answer that question however you think would work, thanks.
Maya and then Gordon and then Alicia.
I have less of a content like addition to add to this and more of a. Of a framing of the questions that I would love added to it when you are making the questions, I want to. This these questions came about on this interview came about from a conversation between the three of us, but it was really Alicia or in Gordon who kept going back to. Like we we have it repeated, like please provide us with a specific example and can you tell us about a time and those types of questions which lead to like some really tangible answers instead of really abstract answers? So if when you are finalizing the questions, if we could word them to get like kind of a narrative around their answer, that that for me is really helpful to find. You know, as much as I was concerned about the Vancouver example, it really gave me like, I felt like I could touch it and it and it was really helpful as opposed to being. Framed in a way that left things really open ended, so I I just encourage us to to frame the questions. To to capture, you know, the experience of working with these particular firms.
Thank you, Maya, Gordon?
Thanks. Just a quick thing on the on the understanding of Oregon, as somebody who. Moved here as an adult and I I think other than Laurel, none of us grew up here. I thought the point that the Alma people made about rather than looking for profiles, looking for particular competence. Competencies was good and it kind of occurred to me in this conversation too, because people may mean different things, what does it mean to understand? The way we do things in Oregon, I think the more specific we can be about, here's what we want somebody to do that that then the question of like Oregon Northwest, West Coast, whatever becomes less. Less of an issue, the thing that I wanted to raise about McPherson, and I don't know if this is doable, but I would be interested. In having Judy and Martina talk to a couple of community groups in Vancouver and say, well, what was your, you know, what was your experience of how this process worked or whatever, you know, something like that, because. The references, you know, people give their own, if I if I was a search firm and my references were all districts who I had successfully conducted a search for. I assume those people are fairly happy, which is good, good to know, but if the question that we're trying to get at is about. Inclusion and equity in terms of outreach to other parts of the community, then it would be good to find somebody. Some organization in that part of the community that could tell us what their view of of working with the firms, not from the point of view of the district, but from some community organization, I don't know exactly. Who that would be or if it's doable, but that's my thought.
Thank you, Gordon, Alicia and then Mary?
Thanks, I know we have a lot of conversation in our small group about what does it mean, you know, Oregon, we kind of came up with it, do you know, funding? Because that was a big issue, just so you know, that's kind of where we 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 tried to develop a question. So people knew they weren't just going to come in and have a bunch of money, but I'm just going to throw this out there, because I've said it, I think the last couple of times we've done search for. I was hoping to see, and I I don't know if it's happened before, and maybe. I'll go to Martina, depending on what you wrote down, but I loved that they had school board members as part of their committee. Because I've gone, I've seen so many of these folks and I kept thinking, this is a career for me after I retire to go on these search firms, because they didn't have the voice of a school board member. So I I know the last group we interviewed McPherson, they kind of touted that, I'm just wondering, so that would be a question, because. Maybe they didn't think to say anything about having a school board member on their search for. And maybe it's really not that important that you ask, but if I can verbally put it out there again. Maybe other organizations will understand that as a school board member, I find that intriguing, thanks.
Right, Mary?
Well, having done this last year with Judy and I as as board leadership and then we decided to to hold off for a year because of COVID. It is not easy to set up a minimum of, I'm thinking eight interviews, if you have two firms for for references for each one. And and it's already nine o'clock, nine fifteen, and so to get this done and get get this out back to us by Wednesday, I think we need to be realistic in what what can be asked. And you know, I think you can get the same level of information with regard to community input by asking the references, I just remember last year how hard it was to schedule. I think we had three different firms and to schedule all the different appointments that we had, we took two days to do it, thanks.
As it as a time check and then Martina will will get to your hand, we are now at about twenty five minutes for this conversation, I I know that it's important. Really understand the the importance of this conversation, because this group is going to help us find the superintendent, but I just wanted to give you a time check. So Martina? And then I see Laurel's hand up.
I was sort of thinking of of time checking us a little bit as well, and I I was just taking notes a little bit on some of the things that I was hearing come up and so. I thought I would throw out some some general questions, because we talked about doing the hybrid of some questions that we asked to both and then some that are targeted to the specific. Organization, does that feel okay?
That's great, I have some notes too, let's see if we have the same.
So I think one that would be really helpful is examples of it's asking them if asking the organization if they have some examples of how the firm dealt with conflict resolution. Either within the board or amongst stakeholder groups in some way, so getting some of those specific examples again. I always like to ask, would you hire them again, I think that's really telling. And then one thing that I was thinking is, you know, because we have been expressing some of the things that we're concerned about. And those are potentially different from what other boards or other districts were concerned about, so I maybe. A way to get at that a little bit is what was your biggest concern going into your superintendent search? And how did the firm address that concern? Because really what I want to know at the end of the day is like, are they going to listen to us when we say we're really concerned about X, Y, and Z, and then are they going to take steps to help support us through that? So I thought maybe just asking a kind of more. Area specific question and letting them address that could be useful.
That's great, Martina, those are great and that those are fairly similar, except for the first, the first one was a good one, the conflict resolution. I wanted to just add that what I heard from the group is what kinds of candidates were presented to you? And maybe it could go along with your question, did they meet the, were they what you were really looking for or where, you know, did they meet your? Your requests or your unique profiles that you set up? And I I might ask, I personally, I think Gordon, that was a great idea, I would ask whoever we're talking to if there were what community groups were involved and maybe then on our own. If we have the bandwidth, I like that idea, reach out. And also who is on your team, trying to see and what were the backgrounds, trying to get whether there was a school board member with a follow up, so.
Laurel?
Um, well, I just wanted to ask one a process question, so when you when you do. Go out, are you going to ask the same amount of people, like if somebody has more references than another one, are you, you know? Are we going to be sure we're even in the what we get back?
My goal was always to get three references if we can on each one.
Okay, that's good to know, and I just wanted to point out that. An equity lens was not at all used for any of this. And so we will need to set up a process as part of the system of when we do these things to allow time for the use of an equity lens. As we go forward in this, so it needs, there needs to be time set aside. To where those questions are put in there and we can each answer them ourselves and maybe we could do it on, because equity lens, we can, it's online, we can use it. You, I mean, others have, everybody's looked at it now, right, the Lane County Long Form Equity Lens, the long form? Well, yeah, check out the long form, that's the good one, that's where the juice is. And that and.
And no one, we never got that, so.
Yeah, you got it in your board packet, I looked at it in the board packet, yep.
I went back to the board packet.
You did on the Friday memo, right?
You got it in the Friday memo and you also got an email from me. So I it was delivered twice.
That's how I got it.
Yeah, I don't, I looked at it, it's forty five pages without any, I mean, I don't even know how to begin to use it, so I'm just going to say. Yeah.
So if equity is foundational, we can't just be like, can't do it, we got to do it.
So Maya, I see your hand up?
No, that was just me forgetting to lower it. I had to say it out loud the time before.
Okay. Oh, sorry, Gordon?
I guess I just wanted to raise, and I don't know if this is something we can decide tonight, to raise the same. Question that Laurel just raised, and I think one of the things that I thought several people liked about. I think it was about Alma was them including equity training for us as part of this process, so I feel like we're all, we're all thinking we should be using. Equity criteria in going out this process, but it seems like we have, we're kind of all over the map about are we, aren't we, and maybe that's not a decision. We can make tonight, but I feel like for the same reasons we were attracted to that in a search firm. We should figure out a way to do it, I mean, we did, we we all have the. Lane County one, I think that's what we voted to use, now voting to use it, I mean, we can go back and look at the last meeting, but voting to use it and being trained on how to use it is not the same thing. But if we're, if this is one of the most important decisions we make. And we all think we should do it with a with an eye to equity, then. It just seems like I just didn't want to let this conversation. Like fizzle out with no real conclusion, I'm not sure.
I don't think we can have, oh, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
That's okay, I was done speaking.
I really apologize, I'm sorry. I don't, I just don't, I've given this a lot of thought, because I knew it would come up, I think every board member on their own is going to have to take if, whether it's the form we had in our packet. Or the one we've used in 4J for years, whatever you're most familiar with, as you do your processing of candidates. Because we don't have a process, we could postpone it and have work session and figure out how we want to implement it and, but I'm. Feeling already anxious about our timeline for getting a search firm hired, so I think we have to all agree on our own that we're going to do this and that can be part of our conversation. When we talk about voting. And then the other thing I wanted to say was. You know, last time before we did the interviews for the interim, we did an anti bias training specifically for hiring and that was very much in the plan, I'm delighted that Alma mentioned it. But we are going to do it regardless of who we who we hire, so.
Maya and then Gordon?
Um, one of the great things about this Lane County tool is if you go to the link that I did share, both in my email and it was in the Friday memo, the table of contents on page 33 has information specific to recruiting and hiring. So if folks want to go with the tool that we agreed on using, that's just a shortcut to get to recruiting and hiring, specific use of the tool.
And I just wanted to suggest kind of following up on your, on what you said, Judy, is if people are looking at different things, whatever somebody's looking at, whether it's what Maya just said or something else, maybe when we come back at the next time, and we'll say where we're at, we could build into that process that each of us would say, and this is how whatever equity lens I use informed where I got to. Is that doable?
Yes, I think that would be a really great part of the process for sure.
I think that this quiet moment might be the cue that we might be ready to at least end this portion of this very long process this evening. And it sounds like Martina and Judy, you have a bit of work ahead of you in terms of reference checking. So Judy, I'm going to stop now, because I think I've gotten you to the end of this process, and I'll let you wrap up in any way you need to wrap up. And it's been a pleasure spending the evening with you all.
Thank you for your help, Karen. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, totally. All right, we're at the end of, I think, our time tonight. So the plan is, we will, it's, it sounds like with Christine's guidance, that we'll have an executive session to get the feedback from the, the, the references that we check. We will get equal number per candidate. And you have an idea of the questions we're going to ask. And then when we do our voting, we will go through and people can share, each board member could share how they looked at you, applied an equity tool to their thinking.
And just, I'm just recalling from the discussion that we had in leadership about timing, just so that everyone's on the same page. That executive session will be before our regular board meeting next Wednesday. So it'll go executive session, then full board meeting. So we will all have had the chance to speak confidentially about the information that was confidentially shared with us before we go into that voting and that bigger discussion, so that everyone will be able to be on the same page.
So that sound like I want to understand the next steps of the process?
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions before we adjourn? I wanted to thank everyone for their engagement and the great, oh, Karen, you look.
No, I just realized a really important process, Judy, that you're going to want to talk to your, the board about is how to collect the materials from tonight so that they become part of the record that you have. So it's just a detail, and I don't, maybe you all know already, but I just didn't want you to forget that the notes that you took tonight need to be collected.
Yes. So bring them. Thank you for the reminder. No, we didn't say that. But we, we did tell people that notes you're taking tonight, which is why some people really got extra credit for color coding. But so bring them to the meeting on November 3rd. And after we're done voting, you might want to be referring to them for the vote. Then we'll collect them, give them to Lisa, and they'll go in the file with our search process. Okay? All right. And Gordon, we'll figure something out with you, because you will be virtual, I think, right? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? I would say this meeting is adjourned.